First meeting in council 2021 in this room. It's nice to be back in person and off of Zoom. Zoom's a great platform to use, but it kind of gets old after a while when you can't look in people's eyes and you just can't express things the same way. We will begin with our invocation by Deacon Mark Cooker. Thank you, sir.
Yes, it's good to be here in person and like to offer this prayer for mighty God and Father, as we gather again in person to deliberate matters for the good of this great city. We pray that you send your Holy Spirit upon these council members and these citizens attending tonight's meeting, granting them wisdom and insight into the matters that will be discussed. Guide them to know what your will is on each of these topics before them tonight. We ask for your continued blessings on our community and its citizens, praying that you will lead us all into ever deeper relationship with you. Help us all to be good stewards of everything you have entrusted to us. We make this request to you, God, through your Son, Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In our study session this evening, the first, let me do this first. I'm going to switch this around and do the proclamation first if you all don't care. Whereas every year, over 36,000 Americans are killed in acts of gun violence and 73,000 more are shot and wounded. And whereas by early February, more Americans are killed with guns than are killed in our county countries in an entire calendar year. Whereas 58% of American adults or someone they care for has experienced gun violence in their lifetime, demonstrating the reach and impact gun violence has in communities across America. And whereas Americans in cities across the nation are working to end senseless violence by advocating for common sense gun safety legislation. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and do all we can to help keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our community safe. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Bob Fox, Mayor of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, do hereby proclaim this week of February 1st to February 6th, 2021, as National Gun Violence Survivor Week. Thank you, ladies. We, as part of our study sessions this year, we felt like it was important for the community to be more aware of what our advisory boards do and other committees that we have in the city. And so each month, we are having a presentation from one of those boards to just kind of update the public on what they do and how they do it. And tonight, it's Board of Adjustment. So who's coming up here? Ryan, Charlie?
Sir, you do.
A lot of people wonder what the Board of Adjustment is. We're going to find out, right?
My glasses are fogging up, so if you'll forgive me, I'm just going to kind of pull this down a little bit. Okay, so tonight is the second in the series of advisory board presentations this year. Tonight, we're going to talk about the Board of Adjustment. And we'll keep our presentation short because we know you have a lot of things on your agenda tonight. With me is Charlie Hubble. He is the chairman of the board. So I'll begin by giving you some background information about the Board of Adjustment, and then I'll turn it over to Charlie. And he's going to talk a little bit about the board's accomplishments and some other things that he'd like to share with you.
Do you have the slides?
Nope. Please continue, and I'll find them.
We'll get those for you in just a moment. I just want to start with some quick facts about the Board of Adjustment. The board is established under the authority of Chapter 89, state law, revised statutes of Missouri. Chapter 89 requires cities that have zoning regulations to establish a Board of Adjustment. So it's not optional. If they have zoning regulations, they have to provide a means of relief, which is a variance process, and they have to have a board that's responsible for hearing and deciding those type of cases. So that's a requirement of state law. Cape Girardeau, of course, does have a zoning ordinance, so we were required to establish our Board of Adjustment. The requirements, the establishment of the board, the composition powers and duties of the board are in the city code in Section 30-204, which is in the zoning ordinance. If you want to read more about the board, you can look at that section. The board is what's called a quasi judicial body. This is different from the other city advisory boards. Quasi judicial meaning having some similarities in part, some powers like a judicial body such as a court. Obviously, not all the same powers, but they do have the ability to conduct a hearing, make findings of fact, conclusions of law, and decide and hear a case. So that's something that's fairly unique about the board. Unlike most of the city advisory boards, the Board of Adjustment is a fairly small membership. It only has five regular members and three alternate members. And that is established in Chapter 89. There's no ability to vary from that. So they're set as far as their composition. And like the other advisory boards, they do have officers, chairman, vice chairman, and secretary. The Board of Adjustment meets on the first Thursday of each month at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. Of course, they have the ability to reschedule meetings and even hold special meetings on an as needed basis, but the regular meetings are once a month here on the first Thursday. And then, of course, the board has the ability to establish committees, just like the other advisory boards. As far as the board's powers, they have the ability to hear and decide appeals of actions by the city staff in enforcing the zoning ordinance. So for example, if I were to make an interpretation, and let's say a particular land use is not permitted in a particular zoning district, and the applicant feels that I've made an error in that judgment, they would have the ability to actually file an appeal with the Board of Adjustment, and they would hold a hearing and decide that. They also hear and decide requests for variances from the zoning ordinance, which we talked about. They also hear and decide appeals of actions by staff when it comes to the floodplain regulations. A lot of folks don't know that. They also have the ability with the floodplain. And then, of course, variances from those regulations as well. And then lastly, they have the ability to hear and decide on requests for liquor license when the establishment is within 200 feet of a church or school. That was something the city established by ordinance a few years ago, and so that duty was given to the board. A majority of the board's cases fall under the category of zoning variances. A vast majority of what they do is reviewing zoning variances. With that, I will turn it over to Charlie, and he's going to talk to you about some of the board's accomplishments.
If you can hear me, I'll talk as loud as I can. Appeals, we've had none over the past five years. And all these that I'm giving you are on a five-year basis. Variances, we've had 50 cases. We've had 40 approved, six denied, four withdrew. Liquor license, within the 200 feet of a church or school, we've had six cases, five approved, one denied, and none withdrawn. Common variance requests include setback encroachment number or size of accessory structures on a residential lot. Accessory use or structure on a lot without a principal use. To give you an instant what that is, centenary Methodist, they have their church, but then across the street, they have a lot, which is a parking lot. They bought a new van, and they had no place to put the van, and they wanted one of the And so we approved that. Most of the time, we [inaudible]. In the older part of town to where the codes are not what they were back then, what they are today. And there are a lot of exceptions because they built the houses much closer together. You could almost walk out of your house [inaudible]. They have a little leniency to individuals. Also, the problem in certain parts of town, all parts of town in the older, is having alleyways. They had no parking on the street. The alley went to their garages. And so we have to hear some of that. Then the other one is structure expansion of a non-conforming use or a structure. Give you a good one, the latest, or maybe not the latest, but a good one, is the Marquette. The Marquette had its parking, but they'd owned a parking lot, and they were trying to make a deal or sell it or lease it to the chamber. So that was that. There's many others that we hear. The last thing was evaluating the zoning changes and recommending changes. We have run across the last 18 months to where, right now, the city code had had a square foot basis, and your structure could only be a certain. And we just felt it wasn't enough, and we could eliminate a lot of problems and headaches for individuals. So we changed, and you all approved it about, I think, 15 months ago, right then. Eric handled it, but we've increased the size of the structures because somebody had an older home that had a very small garage and wanted to increase it to a double. They weren't allowed to, but we've changed that to where that is acceptable now. Just two or three things I want to bring up. One, I got Scott a month ago when he came to visit. One thing I'd like you all to consider, this day and time, finding good applicants that really want to dedicate themselves to a committee. One of the hangups, we lost three on P&amp;Z. I served, before we got a time limit, I served 25 years on the planning and zoning. We lost three of the best members we ever had due to cancer, radiation treatment, and they had to miss more than three months. So what I would like to see is, I only need those to see, so I don't need to see right now.
You don't need to see us.
Yeah, I do it by grail. Is to consider, and there shouldn't be a lot of flexibility. If you've got an illness, you're going to doctor hospital, get an excuse and get an excuse for medical, nothing else. Not vacations, not school, not graduation, not marriage, nothing but medical. Because I know for a fact, and I just talked to another individual, that he's going through problems now, and he doesn't want to get on because he said, "I'll mess up. I'll be gone in three, four months." So I'd like for you to consider it. The other thing that I'd like for you to consider, we used to do it on P&amp;Z with the past two or three mayors, and we need to start it back. We never know the applications that you all are getting for individuals. We don't know about it. We find out after the fact. So what we're wanting to do, and we had that discussion a month ago, we're going to, we used to do it on P&amp;Z all the time. We're going to get notified, the board members or the committee members, that they need to try to find a good individual that wants to serve. And then we go over those and bring you a good name. Now, I just received Friday, four individuals, and I don't know these ladies and gentlemen from anybody, but their first, second, and third choice was not us. And then at the bottom in small print said, "Are anything." Well, that's not good enough. Now, we just had one, I just found out, we just received one today, and the first thing they wanted to serve on is a variance board. Now, another problem we've got that I wasn't aware of till I got into this this past week, we've got three alternates, and that's done by the state of Missouri. But those alternates, we've had one on for 20 years, and he's never been appointed. And I made them go back to look a second time, and they were on there 20 years. What I think should be done is these alternates, if they want to go to be full time, then they need to have first choice of going full time because you've already appointed them to alternate on the Board of a variance. So we want to get involved and try to find you good people that want to serve, that really do want to try to make a difference, you know? The thing you have to do is keep an open mind. We don't care if it's big, little, rich, poor, who it is. Try to be consistent and try to be fair. And try to find people that got a good head on them, that's open-minded, but can make a decision. And you know, most of the time, if you've got the right information, you'll make the right decision. Other than that, if you've got questions, I'll answer them. If not, we're done.
Charlie, thank you for your expertise.
Yep, not a problem.
Anybody have any questions? No, thanks. Appreciate it. At this point, we'll move into communication and report, council.
I'm going to echo the exact same communication report that I've said for the past year, almost. I thank everybody for in this room for wearing your masks and socially distancing. I thank everybody in the community and in the region that are wearing masks and socially distancing, and I just encourage everybody to keep it up. The vaccines are rolling out, but yet this isn't over. And so we just need to make sure that our hospitals are healthy and that our populace is healthy. And just, everybody, keep it up for now, and let's really crush this COVID thing, and hopefully we'll have a 2021 where we can see an end to this. So, thank you, everybody.
Okay, anybody else?
I do. I was going to tell everyone, next Monday, February 8th, at 1 o'clock, the city is continuing its One Cape virtual learning experience hosted by our very own Nicolette Brennan. I will be in attendance, but more importantly, Stan Polovic, Director of Public Works, will be in attendance. And it's a good time, if anyone is interested, to learn more about all the things that Public Works does, about all the streets and infrastructure issues that we have, bring some questions, and it'll just be a great informational time. So I hope people can join us. You can join, you can watch live on the city's Facebook page, or you can register, pre-register, and join the Zoom call. Correct? Okay. All right. Hope to see you all there.
Anybody else? No?
And in that same vein, if you, if anybody is at all interested, the last one, I'd want to thank Mr. Voss, who's also in attendance here, former councilman Voss, who, with myself and along with Nicolette, were able to, and Dustin, our financial director, talked about how council, had a discussion about how council makes difficult decisions. And so they went into that, and they all did a fantastic job, and Nicolette is doing a great job putting these together, and hopefully it's a good resource for everybody in the community, so.
That's the important thing. It's a resource for everybody in the community. We can't have our Citizens Academy right now, and this is just another way we can reach out to the public and let them know what we do as council members, and maybe educate them a little bit on what we do and how things go. And maybe it'll stimulate people to get interested and get involved. That's the important thing. Dan mentioned, you know, wear a mask and all that stuff, and I think we all will be proud to live in Cape County, where it leads the state in vaccinations by a large margin. And that is strictly because we've had some entities get together and partner together to work together to get it done, to get the vaccines, to apply for the vaccine, and to get it done. And those partnerships have worked great, and that's great for our county. There are a lot of people vaccinated in our county, and there are a lot of people that come to Cape County to be vaccinated from other places. But those numbers don't include all those people that come. It's just the people in our county they're counting that, and if you count everybody else we vaccinated that live in other counties, we'd be way far ahead of everybody. So it's a tribute to our county health department and the hospitals and the pharmacies that work together to get this done, and I, kudos to them. At a, I mentioned last time, I had two meetings coming up. One was a Simpo board meeting, and there's a couple of big things happening there. We are on the verge of completing and approving an update to our Metropolitan Transportation Plan, and that involves any kind of transportation, whether it's pedestrian, whether it's bicycle, whether it's cars, whether it's rail, whether it's river, any kind of transportation that covers. And this plan is a 25-year plan, runs from 2020 to 2045. Simpo is hosting two online presentations on February 9th, one from 12 to 1, and one from 6:30 to 7:30. If you go to the Simpo website, you can register online at eventbright.com and take part in those. They'll keep gathering input, and we'll probably get that approved, I would say, in April of this year. One of the other things we did at our last meeting was approve the ADA Pedestrian Transportation Condition Assessment. And that's basically just pedestrian sidewalks, more than anything else, sidewalks and ramps and everything all around our city. That information's also on their website. Also, had a Magnet board meeting. Magnet, you know, is an organization who, it's a regional organization with us and Scott County, or Scott City, and does a lot of things for industrial recruitment and workforce issues. We are in the midst of reorganizing our board and adding some private membership to raise more money so we can do more. With all the workforce issues now that are happening around our state, our governor's, that's one of his priorities, it's a great time to be doing that. They also agreed at the last board meeting to be the fiduciary agent for the feasibility study on the junior college. They will handle that, those funds, and dispense them because the committee was not really organized to do something like that. And considering many of the members of Magnet donated to that effort, then we felt like that was a good thing that board could do. I don't really have anything else unless, Scott, have you got anything?
I'd just like to mention that on Tuesday, February 23rd, we're going to have a MS4 permit meeting at our Public Works building on Southern Expressway from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. I know that is extremely exciting. MS4 stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. And so this is about storm water, and as it comes off in the systems that pick that up, clean it, and return it to our streams. And so that's really important to the, to our health and to the health of water. And so we are given a five-year permit from the Department of National Resources, and so we're in the process of renewing that. Our permit is pretty much the same as the last five years except for one thing, and that is that they are requiring this, this time, this permit to actually put in structures that are built by developers, some form of continued maintenance, and accounting for that through a deed restriction or some other documents. So we are looking toward a deed restriction. So for developers who are developing subdivisions and building detention basins and trenches to clean up that first inch of rain, they have to account to maintain that now, and that will be through a deed restriction. So if you are a developer or no developer, they may want to come out and look at that and see if that's something they want to protest or talk to DNR about those requirements. So just want to make sure everybody's aware of that and how important it is to clean up our water, make sure that we're doing all the right things, and there are a whole myriad of other things, but that's the big change, and so I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of it. Tuesday, the 23rd, 5 to 7, it probably works.
Anything else? If not, we will move on to items for discussion, and the first is a presentation on our urban deer management program.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, good evening. Back in September when I took this job, I was pretty certain this would not have been the first presentation I gave to the council. With that being said, we'll go ahead and get started. The first thing I want to do is I want to say a special thanks to the Department of Conservation Administration, the council. There's a lot of research that goes into an issue of this nature. I'm well aware it's very controversial. It's a very emotional topic, but I attempted to use due diligence to make sure that every option available to us as a city was presented to this council to ensure you have all options. And while this may be a little lengthier of a presentation than you may have expected, it is not simply a recommendation. It is a review of all of our options and also options that are not on the table for us. I want to thank Department of Conservation, especially Erin Shank. She's the manager of the urban and managed deer hunts up in St. Louis area, and she is a wealth of information to be able to get a lot of this detail from her. Real quick, just going to go over a few things on the background side as far as biology and history of this topic here. Some data that was collected back in 2013 on density and effects of overpopulation. Methods and options we have, and then finally, I'll get to the staff recommendation. Some biological background. For many people in this community, being a more rural community, may know a lot of these things, but I felt it was important for those that didn't, just to briefly talk about them. Typically, whitetail fawns are born in late May and early, or late May and June. The fawns do remain with the doe for the entire year until the next breeding season. Home ranges are between a half mile and a mile and a half, depending on the circumstances with which the animals live. The rut, what they call the rut, or the mating season, happens through November. It's when the males tend to get aggressive, and that's not just for deer. Some historical background. On October 19th of 2020, I stood here and, I'm sorry, I sat back in the corner, and listened while this was presented to the council as something that needed looked into. There was a gentleman that There was a gentleman that spoke that the city needs to take some action. There was also a young lady that spoke and as we get farther into this presentation, you will see her words never left my head when I was reviewing all of this. Public safety is a big matter that I considered throughout all of this and I want to make sure that's well known. It is disheartening to me when an individual speaks of being scared of getting hit with an arrow. So I wanted to make sure that was always on the forefront of my mind when I was reviewing all these options. In 2013, City of Cape Girardeau partnered with CMO to conduct a deer survey to find where the densities were at and, and what was, what was the true issue of the urban deer herd. They studied two routes and on the next slide you will see the map of that. The deer density survey found an overall population of 38 deer per square mile. Some pockets though had over 100 and if you go to the next slide, you will see those pockets centralized around the northeast corner of town and the southwest corner of town. Those were the heaviest density populations that we had. Depending on how the route fell, if you notice up by the golf course and in the area where some of these hunts are had, you don't see much density. But when you go through that terrain, it is very hilly and it is often difficult to see from the road where the deer are at because there are hills and bluffs and everything along the river there. So I just wanted to make that clear as well. Urban deer densities. Some facts that we got from the Department of Conservation. Ecological carrying capacity is considered to be about 20 deer per square mile. Social carrying capacity, which would be what some would say the social environment of the area is willing to tolerate, is estimated to be 40. And then you got the biological carrying capacity. This is a number that is very difficult to come to. If you go over to Illinois where my family's farm is at, we can house a lot more deer because we have acres after, or acre after acre of grains, corn, soybeans and food, grasses like alfalfa. We can carry biologically a lot more deer than an urban situation can where there's a lot more concrete and, and less vegetation for them to eat. One of the things I wanted to go over was the effects of overpopulation. Landscape damage during November, well, starting probably September and going through November, December range, the deer have to clean the velvet off their antlers. They use it as a way to mark their territory. They tear up trees. When you have an overpopulation of them, they will tear up your grasses and things of that nature. The next thing is deer vehicle collisions. These stats are from the City of Cape Girardeau Police Department. On, on the number of deer vehicle collisions we've had here in the City of Cape Girardeau, it is a rather large number, but that's all in a matter of perspective. Some may see it as not an issue, others may see it as a, a major issue. So it's just based on perspective. But I wanted to make sure the city council had those numbers in front of them so they could see some of those issues as well. Other effects that happen whenever you have deer around, tick-borne diseases, Lyme disease. As a younger man, I was diagnosed with Lyme's disease because of a tick bite. So I know what that feels like. Deer will carry those ticks around and, and it could become a big problem. Potential for disease spread. This is things of like chronic waist and blue tongue and some of those other diseases that the animals carry with them and they can be spread through close contact of deer and that's why it's prohibited to feed them is because you get them all in close contact, they trade saliva and they pass the disease. Bold and aggressive behavior, especially during the mating season and when fawns are young, those deer become very aggressive. For the mothers on this board and in the audience, if somebody goes after your baby, you're going to come out fighting me and, and we all know that. And to the men, same principle, you're going to come out fighting. It's not just deer that are that way, but all animals go that route. So those are things you have to consider. Overbrowsing leading to a decline in habitat. And this is not just for the whitetail deer. For the waterfowl hunters that may be watching or behind me or sitting in front of me, we are on the Mississippi Flyway, great waterfowl hunting. But if the deer are going through and cleaning up all the grazing properties, for example, the corn stubble fields and everything like that, those birds don't have a place to stop here because there's no food left. So that's something also to consider is not just the deer from the over grazing part, it is also for the other wildlife that find food through those same resources. Mitigation, there are basically two options. You got non-lethal methods and you have lethal methods. Non-lethal methods are more about deterrent and control through lethal means and lethal methods are about population control. I'll also go over a few methods that aren't allowed and I wanted to make sure those were mentioned as well. So that way if there are questions from, from anyone on why we didn't consider this, there is a reason why. Non-lethal solutions, again, they focus on deterrent deer from populating an area, eliminating food sources, minor discomfort and triggering fear responses. Those are the three main avenues you use with, with non-lethal solutions. Some of the non-lethal solutions used, fencing, that's a big one. Unfortunately, city code prohibits a fence over, I believe it's three foot tall in residential areas and it must have 50% transparency on a front yard. On the backyard, you can have a six, I believe it's six foot tall fence with no transparency options. That will stop a deer. If they can't see where they're jumping over a tall fence like that, they will not jump it. Unfortunately, you can't protect your front yards with that option. Repellents, there are various types of these. Some cause discomfort by using similar chemical components to like a pepper spray. It uses peppers just to cause discomfort and get them out of there. Other ones utilize scent. Coyote urine is a big one that they use in those. Just predator, predator smells that cause them to just trigger and fear and run away. Scare tactics, which I recommend nobody uses because it can get into a bad way real quick. Running out and jumping up and down in your yard and scare them off into somebody else's yard. That's all good and well until some mama deer decides to fight back or, or you have a buck with antlers or somebody and I, I hate to say that, but it can happen. So I, I strongly recommend against that. Deer resistant plants. I put quotes around this for a reason. As some of you may know, I've, I've dealt with this issue in Wyoming as well. Out there, everybody planted deer resistant plants and when the winter gets harsh and food sources are scarce, they will eat those plants. Contrary to what anybody else says, I've watched them do it. Here, it's a little easier and I think they are more effective here than what they are in other places, but still use that with a grain of salt. Road warning devices. I'm uneducated on the topic, I'll be real honest. I don't know if they work or not. Everybody says they do, but it is an option for you to use if you so wish. And prohibited supplemental feeding. Again, this comes back to the spread of CWD. That's the big reason for this rule is you don't want those deer congregating, trading saliva on food or other options that are in the ground. And it is prohibited in the code board, that's it. Lethal solutions. These focus on long-term management of the herd using population decrease. The most effective method of this is to harvest does. If there are no breeding or less breeding females, there will be less little ones running around and the population will come down. Of those options, archery hunt, managed hunt, sharpshooting and trapping euthanasia. Those are the four big methods that we can utilize. Again, those are basically the four only options here in Missouri. Real quick, the archery hunt. I believe this was the option presented to this council back in 13 or 14. And essentially it's hunting that occurs under state regulations. The municipality can put additional restrictions on it. It's meant for private property, any property over two acres. I believe the prior one was three acres. You could combine properties with a neighbor if need be to get to that three acre mark. And this runs the entire length of the archery season from September 15th through January 15th. It is a standardized archery tag that you can get over anywhere that is utilized for this and it is utilized throughout the whole course of those four months. This is the lowest cost option because all's people have to do is get permission from a landowner and buy the archery tag and they're ready to go. And it does work at lowering the population, but may not be the best overall option. Managed hunt and, and you will see, I'll be straight to the point, this is what you're going to see come from the recommendation. This is handled under the state regulations through the lottery system to draw a tag. It is on public properties that we as a city designate to the Department of Conservation. Hunters are selected through the lottery system by the state. The city does not pick the hunters. I want to make that very clear. We are independent of this. It runs through the standardized lottery system that the state has set up already for specified dates and sites. The rules for these are a combination of Department of Conservation rules and city rules. We are allowed to add additional regulations to this, which we are doing. I have met with the Department of Conservation on the additional rules we want to put into place and they do fully support this plan, that everything we are doing is within guidelines that they feel are appropriate. That includes the hunt sites and dates. We're in that discussion as well. The city will be tasked with monitoring and checking hunters for compliance. In speaking with the Department of Conservation, they are willing to work with our police department in conjunction with the Department of Conservation to assist with the enforcement and monitoring of these hunts, kind of as one unit to make sure that everything is done right and we're all good. The next option, sharpshooters. This is the option utilized in Rollins, Wyoming. I know that because I was out there when that was passed. That's where you have trained marksmen shoot deer over bait. It's highly effective at eliminating the population very quickly. The city would be required to get a special permit. Deer meat must be donated through the Missouri Department of Conservation Program. That helps raise the cost because we would probably have a company come in that are trained marksmen doing this for us, which is very costly. Additionally, we'd have to pay for the processing of the meat to be donated to the program. So this is a very, very costly program and it would require ongoing maintenance throughout the years to continue lowering the population. I did not recommend this program because I don't feel it is appropriate given the urban setting we are in to utilize firearms. It is very quickly turned into a bad situation when you're using high-powered rifles in a small condensed area. So that's why this one didn't move forward. Trapping euthanasia. This is a very, I believe rarely used option. Essentially deer individually trapped and euthanized with a bolt gun or a non-projectile device, I should say. We're still required to say, required to obtain a specialized permit and again, the deer meat must be donated through the same program as the sharpshooter and again, it'd be very costly. But no, no ordnance change be required for this, but it is very ineffective trying to catch one deer at a time through trapping. Now to move forward to methods not allowed. The first one is sterilization. There is some talk throughout various areas of utilization of the sterilization method. Essentially what it is, we would catch the deer, tranquilize them and perform a, I'm not sure if hysterectomy is the correct word, but you sterilize the animal so they can no longer reproduce. This is an extremely, extremely expensive option. The Missouri Department of Conservation back in the 90s did a sample of this to see how effective it was and they essentially said they will improve the plan with this. It is very expensive and it does not lower the population and as new deer come in that are not sterilized, you're continuing to have to keep going and going in and you can never get ahead of the problem. Trapping relocate, I know this is one of those plans, are one of those options people often refer to. There are multiple reasons why this is illegal and this is something the Department of Conservation will not allow anyone to do. First off, 70% of relocated deer do not survive to the next breeding season. 30 to 35% perish within one month due to, or of relocation due to stress of trap, trap and transfer. The stress of the interaction, it basically wears their body down and when they're relocated, they never recover. The remaining fall victim to predation, vehicle strikes and other issues and that comes from acclimating to a new location where they don't know where the food sources are, they don't know where the water is and all those other things and majority of them end up succumbing to, to death. The other issues with this are, it assists with the spread of disease. CWD is a big issue we're fighting right now in certain areas within the state and it's actually something going on, going on all over the country. When you take portions of our population out and put them somewhere else, not only do you make it their problem, but you also may be transferring disease along with it. those are the big reasons why Missouri has pushed away from that option and basically stated it's not legal for us to, to do. Considerations for a successful management program. First and foremost will be public safety. As I stated, there was a young lady that spoke at the October 19th meeting that, that was, that was truly concerned about her safety with the prior program where you could hunt pretty much any property if it was over three acres. That, that, those words never left my head again. That was the first and foremost thing was what can we do within these options that we have that we can do safely to ensure members of the public don't get hurt. The second thing is use of taxpayer funds. This is right down my wheelhouse. As the Director of Finance, I'm going to do everything I can, that is my job, to protect city funds to the best of my ability. Personally, the spirit of fair chase. If you are hunting deer with a rifle over bait as a sharpshooter, that is not fair chase to me. That is a personal issue I have. I do believe in the spirit of fair chase that animals may see you in the tree or smell you and they have the option to run. So that was one of the factors that I also took into consideration. The types and methods, types of methods available was a consideration. And then objective, what level of urban deer herd do we wish to maintain? If we wish to wipe every deer out, I'm going to tell you that sharpshooter is probably the best option because we can do it very quickly, but you're going to have to write a big check to do so. I feel the recommendation that we are putting forth is both economically sound and over time will be an effective method. This is just the beginning of the program. The urban deer issue did not start overnight and it will not be fixed overnight. This has to be a long-term plan of success. Staff recommendations, maintaining a herd of approximately 20 deer per square mile. This is going to be very difficult, but over time we can manage it and eventually get it down to where the herd is more under control. The staff recommends we implement an urban deer hunt. To me, it is the safest lethal method available. There are no firearms involved. This will only be for archery equipment. It will allow the thinning of the herd slowly. One of the things that I feel is best about this plan is it is the beginning. We can slowly take some out of the herd. We can review the plan. We can find problems with it. And it is manageable with our staff. It is five small properties on the edges of town. I am well aware that, that it's not in the center. I wish I had the map back up. All the way over in the center of town where a lot of those hot over in the center of town where a lot of those hot As I said in an earlier slide, mile and a half to a half-mile to a mile and a half, they will start moving. But by putting it on the edges here, it gives us as a city and the Department of Conservation the opportunity to work through this program, establish the protocols between the PD and the Missouri Department of Conservation to ensure we're doing this right. We're following all the rules. We got our checks in place. We can go check hunters because there's a limited amount of places they can actually hunt. It's a limited number of hunters, et cetera, so it's a much more manageable program. Each year, basically do a reevaluation of everything. How many deer were harvested? What are the sighting numbers looking like? What are the deer vehicle collision numbers looking like? We can raise or lower the tag amounts if we wish. We can raise or lower the properties we wish to allow hunting in. It gives us some flexibility to manage this as a true plan instead of a guess. Four designated areas within the city, Twin Trees, Delaware Park, Fountain Park, and Cape Rock. Parks and trails in the hunting zones will be closed for the period of November 11th through December 5th. It will consist of five consecutive seven-day hunting periods for this managed hunt. There will be a mandatory orientation meeting held on October 26th. This will give us an opportunity to sit down with all the hunters to ensure they know what the rules of the hunt are. I have coordinated with the Department of Conservation already, and if this plan proceeds, they are going to have representatives at this meeting as well to go over ethical hunting, safety protocols, and all those other items that need to be covered to ensure a safe Also, there will be a pill draw for the property you get. So instead of running, this is an intricacy of the lottery system of the Department of Conservation, but instead of having a single draw for each property, we're doing a draw for the entire week, and then they will do a pill draw for which properties they hunt. That was the best recommendation they could give us today. Next slide is very difficult to read. There are items, there are items within this that are in the ordinance but not on here. I was trying to get as big as possible and cover as many things as possible, but I'll go through them real quick for anyone that can't see it. Archery methods only will be allowed, longbow, compound bow, recurve bow, and crossbow. Those are your four options. Hunting only allowed in designated areas and designated dates with proper permits issued by the state of Missouri through the lottery system. Hunters are required to use designated parking areas and display provided parking tag on the dash of their vehicle. During the orientation meeting, the Department of Conservation has these dash tags. That way, if they change vehicles while they're hunting there, they keep the dash tag. That way, we know they're valid, and when we go in there and hunt, we should be able to check who it is. Hunters must wear orange for the entire managed hunt. During the course of the dates listed for those hunts, you will have the firearm season outside of the city of Cape Girardeau, and it is required to wear hunter orange, or blaze orange, whichever term you choose to use. We're requiring it for all hunts in city limits for a safety measure. If you see somebody in orange outside of those dates, you're going to call, say, why is there a guy in orange sitting up in a tree in Arena Park? It just helps add a level of protection inside. Arrows taken to the field must have permanently written, written permanent marker on the shaft the individual's Missouri Department of Conservation identification number. In the event of an accident or other issue, we are going to be able to trace back to who that person was. I'm not going to know who it is, it's just going to be a number to me, but we can get Department of Conservation, and they can run the number and find out who the individual is. Elevated stands must be used by all hunters, no ground hunting allowed. This is a very specific reason for this. The elevated stands must be 10 feet off the ground. That is to try to ensure a downward shot into the ground and not a shot across a flat plane, which will lead to a trajectory going further into the distance. The elevated stands must also be marked with a Missouri Department of Conservation identification number of the hunter as well, so we know who's in there hunting and everything else. Stands are allowed to be placed on the first eligible day, must be removed by the final day of their eligible hunt. If we find one that the eligible hunt has expired for the individual, we will pull the elevated stand. Hunter permits will be valid for seven days. As you saw in a prior slide, there are five consecutive seven-day periods. The hunter's tag will only be valid for those seven days that they are selected for. Lastly, the permit allows for the harvest of two deer, an antlers and an either sex. Essentially, this is earn a buck program. You have to shoot the antlers deer first before you can shoot the either sex. A couple other pieces I wanted to cover in that section. Hunters under the age of 16 per the ord, I'm sorry. Hunters under the age of 18 per the ordinance must have a adult hunter-certified individual with them in order to hunt. That is an option you guys can leave on the table or choose not to. Essentially, anyone under the age of 18 must be with a responsible adult that is hunter education certified to ensure a safe hunt. I don't want any young individuals out there on their own. Delaware Park. This is the first managed hunt property. Can you go back to slide 24? I missed a very important piece, and I apologize in advance. I wanted to address the maximum deer harvest. There is a rule within the Department of Conservation that hunting parties can apply for these managed hunts, up to five individuals per party. In the event a hunting party is drawn, there may be more than eight hunters per week. This will only be the case if they are drawn later in the random draw, meaning if a party of five is drawn first, they will take up five of the spots, and we will draw three more. This will only come into play if they're drawn last, and we have seven drawn already, and a party of five is. So please be aware of that rule that we have no control over. They said it is very, very rare that you get hunting parties applying, but it is something they wanted to make sure we were aware of, and I wanted to make sure you as a council understood as well. In the event that happens in all five weeks, the maximum number of deer goes from 80 to 120. So I wanted you guys aware of that as well. That is a rule that is out of our control.
Since each hunter in the party would be a, or is it per party?
Each individual within the party would be eligible for two deer. And that is conservation rule. While I'm also thinking about the maximum number of deer harvested, it is very unlikely that we will hit the maximum. It should not be the expectation of this council, the citizens, that we hit the maximum number. Throughout the course of those five weeks, we're going to have varying weather issues. Some hunters who apply may not actually ever be able to make it. Those things happen. So the level of his success is not getting to the magic number of 80. It is a safe, successful hunt that lowers our population, whether it be two deer, or 40, or 80. That is what I define as a successful hunt. Anyway, back to Delaware Park, please. So the first area is Delaware Park. This is an approximately 11.23-acre piece of property located off of Lexington. This is a city-owned property. We would have one hunter per hunting period in there. The nearest residence from the property line is measured at 80 yards, so if you would be where the 1129 is, where the property is, to the nearest point where the property crosses is 80 yards. This is in the middle of one of those zones. This property borders towards 1 and 4, where there's a large concentration of deer in the area. The next property is Twin Trees. Hunt Area 1 is for three hunters per period, and Hunt Area 2 is for two hunters per hunting period. On the map there, essentially East Cape Rock Road, or Rock Drive splits the properties. One is located right next to the river. The second one is up on the mound where the trail goes through. During the hunt, again, the trail would be closed, and we would have signage posted, et cetera, to make sure nobody was in there. Hunt Area 1 is 31.66 acres where three hunters can hunt, and then the second area is approximately 20.86 acres. Area 1, the closest resident is considered to be 75 yards, which would be up on the northernmost corner, and the property is over on County Road 654 that was measured to. For Area 2, the nearest resident is approximately 250 yards away.
Can you give us, for those who are not really familiar with archery shooting, what's the typical distance that you can even make?
Responsible hunters probably won't take a shot outside of 30 to 40 yards. I know there are some with the advances in crossbows I've heard that are trying to shoot deer out to 100 yards. I don't know why they're doing that. It leads to a wounded animal. That's my own personal point of view, so I know if I offended somebody, I'm not trying to be. But a true clean kill shot is 30 to 40 yards max, in my opinion, based on my knowledge of the topic. The next property is Cape Rock. This is, this will be for one hunter, it's approximately five acres. The actual entire plat of that property is larger than that, but it goes up into where that turnaround is, and I've cut the property off to ensure that we don't have hunters where vehicles are going to be going right there. That was more of a safety measure. The measurement from the nearest residence is approximately 175 yards. The last one is Fountain Park, is located there also next to the Cape Rock Circle. This is approximately seven acres, and the nearest residence is 140 yards. Before we get to questions from the council, a couple more pieces of information. One of the things we will talk about in the orientation meeting is hunter ethics, safely operating your equipment, wildlife identification, things like that. That's also a big part of the hunter education course that you have to have to be eligible This is a very sensitive topic, as I started with, and I know there are individuals that may or may not like this plan. I know some may think, why are we hunting the very edges where the hotspots of the problem are not? Again, this gives us an opportunity to start with five small pieces of property to establish our procedures and a good safety record to ensure we're doing this the right way while you have citizens at a distance and away from the situation. Deer will travel up to a mile and a half, and a lot of these are between a mile and a mile and a quarter from what I would consider the hot zones that were on that original map. I'm aware that we are on the edges, and we're kind of out there. This will slowly work on the population. It'll also give us the opportunity, again, like I said, to establish our procedures and protocols to get this done right, and we can reevaluate this and have properties that we deem safe enough to establish a hunt in that are in other locations with the city. I just felt it was best to start on city-owned properties on the edges to ensure we get this done right before we start producing or putting out there to a bigger scale. That's what happened in 2013. You basically open it up to any property over three acres. That's a lot to manage, and that's a lot of safety issues. This is essentially a bunch of small properties on the very edges that we can safely manage throughout this process, and that's what we were trying to get to, was the public safety stance on the whole matter. Questions from the council?
I'll ask this one, and I think I understand the answer, but I'll ask it away. Can you go into, on the age, talk about it shall be unlawful for any person under the age of 18, and what specifically, why there was a date on a Missouri, on a valid hunter education card being January 1st, 1967, instead of not just, I, explain that in detail if you don't mind a little bit.
I plagiarized.
I figured you did, because, because that's
I'm sorry, I shouldn't say that.
Because that's what the state of Missouri has
That is the exact same language.
That's what I thought.
So what it is, is individuals that are born before the date that is in there, and I don't remember it off the top of my head, are not required to take a hunter safety course. Anyone born after that date is required to have a hunter safety course in order to participate.
I understand.
And it is strictly 100% Department of Conservation language. They said it well, so I didn't feel like reading.
And will you talk about, without, I mean, I could talk about it, but I'll let you talk about it. Will you talk about what the hunter safety course in the state of Missouri entails?
Nope.
The hunter education course?
I've never taken it.
You've never taken it?
I took it in Illinois.
Okay. Well, I took it when I was 18 years old, or 17 years old, and it is, it used to be an eight-hour course that you took at a VFW.
You got lucky. Illinois, 16 hours.
Oh, really? Yeah. So it was put on by the Missouri Conservation Department. It was an eight-hour course on a Saturday where old and young would sit through. I'm assuming, is that still, or even probably way more?
There are options for online now that weren't there when I was growing up, but the big pieces that come out of those classes are hunter responsibility and ethics. Those are very big pieces. They talk about how firearms work and how to work them safely, actually having a firearm there. Bows do operate different, but there are options for that as well to learn. But you always operate these things as if they're loaded, as a standard practice with the gun safety. They also talk about wildlife identification. All too often, you hear of situations where an individual is shot during a hunting season because somebody mistook them for game. I'll be real honest, if Scott's walking through the woods and I mistake him for a deer, deer walk on four legs, he walks on two, you're not doing it right. And they go through a lot of those details to ensure people realize how to identify the game before pulling the trigger. Another part of the firearm safety part is knowing what's behind the target. That is a big piece, because when I pull the trigger, I need to know not only what I'm shooting at, but what's 100 yards, 500 yards, 1,000 yards downrange. That's a part of it as well. That's where the elevated stands come in, where if you're shooting at a deer straight down into the ground, you have about three feet beyond your target to worry about because you're shooting down into the ground, where if you're shooting on the ground, you have infinite distance. They do talk about first aid skills, survival skills, those types of things in the ones I took. Wildlife conservation and management, knowing what the limits are, knowing to follow those limits. There's a reason why those limits are in place. We have biologists and professionals that monitor this stuff, and they talk about a lot of those things. And each state will go into their unique rules that are different. For example, in Illinois, as a trapper, you can get five otter per trapping season. In Missouri, there is no limit. It's these intricate rules that they go over that are different between the states because those are very important. If I was educated in Illinois, it's my responsibility to know those intricate rules, but here, they go through those very clearly to make sure that you're following the proper protocols. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, no, it does. The only other, there were, one, how are they checking in their deer? And two, how do we ensure that good hunters are hunting in these areas?
First question, how do we know they're checking in?
How are they checking in? I know on MHDPC, you can telecheck and
Yes, they will still utilize that because these are tags issued by the state of Missouri, so they still have to follow that standard protocol. We are requiring to also call the Cape Girardeau Police Department and logging the harvest with our team so we can also track it.
Okay.
I can, I will work with Department of Conservation. I know I can get the listing if we miss somebody.
Right, absolutely.
So that's how we're handling that.
That was a tough one.
Second question's a difficult one because there is no guarantee. That's all I can say. Back in Illinois, when I hunt, there is no telling who is going to be on the state ground that's less than two hundred yards from where our property is. He can sling a slug across there and take me out and I have no control over it. I I hope that the people are following these guidelines that the Department of Conservation is putting into place. I hope they understand that with the arrow labeled with their Department of Conservation ID number, if that goes slinging into somebody's backyard and they can't find it, when it's found, we will find them.
Yeah, absolutely.
Those are some of the protocols we've put in place to try to persuade them to be ethical hunters. If that helps.
I've already asked enough. I'll let somebody else go.
I want to ask a question about the, how do you ensure they're ethical hunters or good hunters? When you were speaking about the managed hunt, you said that municipalities, it's it's a state-run program, but municipalities have the ability to to modify it to a certain extent.
To some degree, yes.
You mentioned the state lottery is run by the state according to people who apply to be in that lottery. So would they apply specifically for this Cape Girardeau lottery? Or they apply for all lotteries and then they just happen to get drawn for this one?
No, you would have to specifically apply for the Cape Girardeau lotteries.
Do we have the ability as a, as the city to be restrictive on the qualifications to be in that pool for that lottery? Meaning whether they're Cape Girardeau city residents or they have to be Cape Girardeau county residents? We don't have that ability?
Lottery system, it would be open to everyone, including non-residents.
That anybody that holds a Missouri, or do they, do they even have to be Missouri citizens or?
They do not. Non-residents are able to apply at a much higher fee.
Okay. And so then therefore that answers my question that it's also probably state law or Missouri Department of Conservation that we can't be restrictive in not allowing hunting parties if we wanted to do that. It has, by folding into this system, we have to accommodate their regulations. Okay.
Now, just a little bit more on that topic. As a Missouri resident that hasn't always been one, in order for me to get a hunt license, I have to show proof of a hunter educate, a state sanctioned hunter education certification. I had to send a copy of my Illinois certification to the state of Missouri before I could get a hunt license. So even if it is someone from out of state, they have to have a state certification of hunter certificate, uh, safety or education, depending on which state you're in, in order to get a hunt license, get a tag. So this, from the safety component, they still have to have those those tradings.
Thank you.
I have just to add into what Robbie and Nate had said. So we can't even be more restrictive with regard to if an individual is under the age of eighteen, then they have to be with a person who is either born before January first nineteen sixty-seven. We cannot restrict that further to requiring the M H E C?
That is more restrictive than the Department of Conservation's law.
So that we cannot change?
So the state, the co, the Department of Conservation's rule on that is anyone under the age of sixteen must be with said language.
Okay.
I've increased that to eighteen for, again, additional safety protocols. Because a sixteen, seventeen-year-old, I feel should fall under that.
But but if we wanted, the, what the question is is.
I'm asking, can we make that that adult have an M H E C certification? Just because you're born before January one nineteen sixty-seven?
That requires it.
That does require it.
So if you read the entire piece.
It does require it.
It is the option of someone born. Now, we can remove the section that says someone born before whatever the date is and just state certification. We can do that.
I I would like to see that. I don't, I don't, I mean, I would, I would like to make sure that person is certified.
Yeah, that is a piece we can control.
Okay, so we can be more restrictive.
To simply answer that piece, yes.
But we can't be more restrictive in our lottery?
Correct, because we don't touch and we don't.
And we can't be more restrictive in, we're talking about whitetail deer here, but we we also have concerns, citizens, about albinos and piebald deers. We can't be more restrictive with regard to not harvesting of albino?
Correct. And that goes back to the Missouri Constitution where the Department of Conservation has full authority over the wildlife and management thereof. And that with albino deer not being regulated on the state level, we cannot come in and override them on that.
Okay, so.
And that's a particular piece that we have no control over.
Okay. So just to be clear, if we decide that this managed hunt is going to go forward, then anyone could take an albino or a piebald deer?
Just like they can in the state.
Right.
Right.
And and again, that's out of our.
Right, okay. My, I have a couple other questions.
Can I just ask, uh, follow up on even more specific? Can we be specific about not allowing anyone under the age of eighteen at all?
I can check on that. And and I don't foresee that being an issue. I I guess the simplest way it was explained to me is Department of Conservation controls the wildlife. We have control on hunters, if that makes sense. We have control of the hunters. So if we want to restrict them to wear blaze orange, we can. But when it comes to the wildlife issue, they have full control. Does that?
Within the, within the confines of their established system for the lottery, though.
Correct.
We have to abide by whatever policy, whatever they have for next year.
We can't say no albino, no hunting of albino and piebald, but we can say you've got to wear blaze orange.
Or we can't say you have to be above eighteen. I mean, that's still something.
And I'll double check on that one.
Okay.
I have a few more questions. Do we have the M D C's arch reports for hunting-related accidents?
We have not received those.
Okay.
In conversation, I believe it was at the meeting, Scott, that we were both at, they said they didn't have, to to Aaron's rec, uh, recollection, there were none.
In a managed hunt?
Yes.
Okay.
No, in a managed.
But when I do get information back, I did request that from them. When I do get that back, I will pass that along.
Also, is council able to attend this orientation meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I would encourage it.
This, I've got a list here. Just bear with me. You had talked about in your presentation that sharpshooting was not an option, but it was a requirement under a sharpshoot hunt that that meat had to be donated and tested for C W D. Is that, that's, and that's something that the city would have to pay for the expense to test, test the meat for processing.
So there's, there's two pieces to that.
Okay.
We are required to have the meat processed and donated. The Department of Conservation may or may not choose to test it because we are not in a C W D zone.
Okay, but we are close.
We are close.
We are one county away.
So in the zones, they're requiring it. Outside of the zones, it's optional. So there's two different pieces to that.
Right. So so part of the the individuals that support this managed hunt also support the Share the Harvest, which I don't know if you wanted to talk briefly about. But under the current situation, with Cape County not being part of the C W D management zone, which is the chronic wasting disease management zone, even though we are close, the hunters that participate in this hunt could donate the meat if they so choose.
Absolutely.
Okay, but it's at their expense?
Yes. So any hunter that harvested deer that chooses to, and Illinois is the same way. If you choose to donate the animal to Share the Harvest or one of the other organizations that are very similar, you pay the processing costs. With the sharpshooter option, we are paying someone to harvest the deer. Therefore, it is our responsibility. Under the Managed Hunt Program, they can choose to keep the deer and utilize the meat themselves. Or if they choose to donate it, it would be at their expense.
I just have one other, like just minor amendment to our proposed ordinance, just for consistency reasons. Under our subparagraph E six, for, we have that any individual successfully harvests deer during a hunt must report by calling the Cape Girardeau Police Department. I would just, you know, later when we get to our regular session, just to amend that to, for subparagraph E four, to change from City News and Subatement Officer to the Cape Girardeau Police Department.
Yeah, we can do that, I believe, in first reading.
Right.
Any other questions?
I have a question. You mentioned earlier, you know, just about seeing this as a, as a process that takes multi-years, I guess. But just be clear with everybody, we're, we're approving just a one year. Just in November of twenty twenty-one.
Correct.
And you would anticipate every year needing to reapprove?
For now. If we would ever get to a situation that we have all the properties under the power that we need and.
You could suspend it and just do away with it.
You you could, you could just not reapprove it.
Right.
Or you could do a multi-year, I assume.
I'm, I might point out that the ordinance as written does not have a time period. So I think what you're referring to is it would be, it could be reevaluated after this hunting season. But the ordinance right now, as written, does not have a time period only for twenty twenty-one.
I would have to go back and look at what I stated. I'll defer to leave council on that one.
Certainly, if you'd like to amend, that's, that's another amendment you could offer.
Two, two questions. We had discussed earlier, we've got information, which I really appreciate regarding liability issues. Those have come up by, by some of the community today. Can you just paraphrase the piece specifically about individual hunter liability issues as well as city liability?
I'm going to paraphrase because all of my notes on that are in there. But essentially what it comes down to is we have the ability.
You want that?
No. We do have the ability to require hunters have personal liability insurance before participating in managed hunt on our properties. In speaking with the Department of Conservation, a lot of the the St. Louis municipalities did take that route initially within their programs. And all of them have since eliminated it because there were issues with the example that was given to me. Some individuals getting together and forming an LLC that could get liability insurance. And anybody that paid a certain fee to the LLC could hunt under that plan. And it led to some not so savory hunters than, than what I was told. And it put a burden on some of our, some individuals that couldn't afford the insurance but are still quality individuals and quality hunters. It eliminated them from the program. While you have others that aren't quite as good, going through a less than stellar way of getting around it, if you will, because they couldn't get it on their own. So we can do that if this council desires. But I would be safe to say the criminal and civil processes will cover us. If if I discharge an arrow that hurts someone or I'm shooting across the road, I'm in violation of the law at that point. And again, that comes back to why the identification on the arrows there and why we're having the Department of Conservation and our P D checking individuals. We will be out there checking their arrows to ensure they're wearing blaze orange, to make sure they're labeling their arrows, make sure their stands are labeled, following these rules. And those protocols are in place to help mitigate those problems before they hit you.
And then, uh, question, you know, so the city need additional liability fees?
No, there are two pieces to that, the Missouri Recreational Use Act. It is back there. I'm going to paraphrase and I hope I don't misquote statute. But essentially what it says is any landowner that allows the use of their property for recreational purposes for your charge, which this would be the case since we are not charging a fee for them to hunt, that is the conservation's area. We are wa, uh, we are covered in liability. Hunting is one of the noted recreational uses within that regulation. And I believe it's five thirty-seven dot three four five through three four eight. It is the recre, uh, is the statute on that that you can look at. And then also we have our standard general liability coverages that I, that I'll also take back too. So we're covered on both sides.
Just one quick follow-up, just on what you were speaking about earlier. It looks like section C three talks about no arrows maybe discharged or projected at such an angle or distance that the land basically outside of the designated area. So if they do, and I think people are concerned about, especially if they do and they hit my dog or damage my car or, you know, worst case scenario. That, what's the, I mean, I don't want to go into all the types of federal laws that, you know, punishment, but, but you said the P D would would step in and, you know, at a minimum, if you, if you walk out the front door, you know, some of these properties, and find an arrow lying in the front yard, what, what's the problem?
They need to get hold of the Cape P D immediately and report it.
I'm just going to say. So as a follow-up to that, do you have the ability and the flexibility to change penalties?
Yes, yes, you do.
We, you have the flexibility to change penalties?
Yes, we do.
Anita?
No, sir, we don't. We have the range of punishments that go up to a five hundred dollar fine. And we are restricted, much though we wish we were not.
So could we change it, make it like a hundred thousand dollars?
Please, order, will the audience please be quiet and just listen?
So that's just, that was my.
You may be listening a lot longer because this is a subject that we need to talk about.
That was my question, is, is there flexibility for us to be able to increase these penalties? That's state statute. We can't affect change on those penalties.
That is correct, but remember that they also are violations of the state statute. And the state statute could carry significantly higher penalties than a municipal ordinance violation.
This is municipal?
Yes.
The hundred to five hundred?
As you stated, if an individual throws an arrow, I'll use me for example. If I get hit with that arrow and I'm mortaled and wounded.
That's a whole different range.
That's a different.
No longer a hundred dollars.
Right, 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 right.
That is a criminal charge and also civil, civil option as well. So there, there are other avenues.
Sure. Well, just, just for my sake, I was thinking, you know, in order to sort of scare people into making sure they abide by all these rules and regulations, is there a way to increase those penalties? But there's not.
And that is, and that is simply for violation of that.
Sure.
As it escalates up there.
As it escalates up, yeah, that's something out of our control, but.
And again, and that's why I wanted to stress having the right numbers on these pieces of equipment.
Sure.
Where if that happens, that citizen should be able to pick it up and they see that number on, get a hold of P D and they will handle contacting Conservation and we will be able to handle it.
Sure. Are you finished with all your questions?
I am.
Okay, just a couple of questions for you if you don't mind. How involved was the Department of Conservation in putting together this concept?
Very much so.
Okay.
I would say they, and Scott, you correct me if I'm wrong, they gave us all of our options. And they said, these are the legal options, these are options you live with. I did research on, on this area as a whole, looking for the best opportunity to establish this program. And that's how I came up with those properties. I had a follow-up meeting with the Department of Conservation following the completion of everything here on January eleventh. And I went through this entire presentation with them. I went through all of the details and everything else. In the end, they said this plan is valid. And they're, they're fully supportive of what we're doing.
In all of your research, there, there are a lot of other communities that you've researched that. researched that have, have, have managed hunt operations, correct? Okay. Anything surprising? Because I think in a list once, I think I saw something even like Kirkwood and other places that, that you wouldn't expect for there to be managed hunt operations.
St. Louis County, DePere, Baldwin, yeah, there, there's a bunch of them. Again, Wyoming, every town has one.
Sure.
Just because of the situation out there. So, so Cape Girardeau is not isolated in this being an issue. This has been done in multiple places within the state of Missouri, other states, and about 100 managed deer hunts.
Yeah.
That's a good find, Nicolet.
And all of these have been done successfully. And if you look at some of these, they're massive with a lot of hunters, a lot of acreage and all that other. We don't have the same setup as those do and that's why I said it the way I did. I also went against what we did in my last job with the sharpshooters because this area is not conducive to that. In Rollins, Wyoming, USA, it is conducive for that plan. This plan is conducive for Cape Girardeau, Missouri. And if you look through the lists of all those, all those different, all those different municipalities, taxing districts, whatever counties, you will find everybody does things just a little different. I believe there are five or six different permit quotes, meaning some are three, some are one, some are two, some you can kill two does and get one buck, etc. Everybody has a different structure. What I was trying to do was fit a plan that fits Cape Girardeau with this to the best of my ability.
Did, in all your conversations with MDC, did anybody have any concerns about our herd, our urban deer herd? Is there any disease or any other questionable impacts right now?
They had no concerns on the disease side.
Okay.
I know during conversation with them, under this plan, they would, during the firearms portion of those seasons that we would be hosting, or during the non-firearm season, they would give the option to call in and come in during standard business hours for a shot of testing if someone's available, but they're not going to require it, which tells me they're not concerned about our herd.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
But they didn't, there wasn't anything explicitly like, oh, the Cape Girardeau herd is in danger because of its own genetic makeup or other communicable...
They never said anything to me and I'll refer to Scout if he heard anything, but I don't recall them.
Cool. You know, I just in general am pretty tenuous about this because the majority of these hunt areas fall within Ward one. And it just puts, gives me a lot of pause seeing those, those parks and other natural areas kind of lit up like that. And it just makes me cautious because we've got, you know, decent amounts of population density in Ward one, but we also have some open tracts of land. And it just sort of, it just, it just gives me a lot of question, a lot of... The hearing, their concerns about this.
Anybody else?
Oh, you go for a second, I want to. Do you plan to work with Parks and Rec to make sure that these areas in Ward one are cleared with all individuals and cordoned off appropriately? And how do you plan to do that?
And we'll involve PD in that as well.
Okay. Are they going to, like, how, how far in advance before the hunt period are they planning on doing this to make sure that there's nobody in there?
That's going to be a situation that's going to be, the, the weeks leading up to it, we'll probably have to do some walking through, especially the PD. And I know in speaking with Ty, he is very familiar with the properties and different things that go on there. And I think we can work through that pretty well and just make sure the hunters are ordering orientation that if you see somebody that's not supposed to be there, because these are closed properties, contact them immediately and they will take care of it.
And I think the concern is that we have a homeless population that frequents those areas and that we need to make sure that they are identified and removed from that area and placed somewhere else to safety. So that is a concern.
And I think I would rather have the PD handle that than Parks and Rec.
Right. Yeah.
Nate?
This issue was brought forward by a citizen or, or this concern was by, or citizens. And so, you know, I approach it, addressing that concern, if we were to address it or take action on it, I look at what the benefits of that are and the costs and the risks of that as well of taking action. So then on the flip side, which you've done a great job, a great job with your analysis comprehensively, as well as then I look at if we don't take action, what is the, the costs and the benefits of that, which we have. And at the risk of being leading or rhetorical, I feel like it wasn't mentioned very much, was what are the benefits to the city of Cape Girardeau or to Cape Girardeau citizens to not taking action and allowing the population to stay as is or the population growth to remain as is undeterred by taking action?
That is an option, absolutely.
What are the benefits to it?
Growing up on a farm, as population numbers increase, I have seen two rounds of distemper in raccoons. It is a nasty disease, but it starts because of overpopulation. We have found deadheads on my family's farm that were likely caused by CWD or a blue tongue or one of the, one of the many diseases they get. You don't like seeing it. Typically controlling the population is the best method to do that. There are options that are non-lethal. They are options and, and you can do an educational program explaining what deer resistant plants are. You can explain what kind of repellents you can get, the fencing options. We can do all those things. Those are options. They're not going to lower your population period. That's just not, that's not what they're, that's not what they're made for. Let me say it that way. That's not what they're made to do. And those are options. But one piece I want to ensure is known is in every one of these options I put in front of you and non-lethal solutions are one of the options I'm showing you and being open about. None of them are 100% when it comes to public safety. I'll be 100% honest, there's going to be people that disagree with me, but sharpshooters wasn't a good option because I don't want firearms and I don't want a bullet ricocheting. I don't feel trapping youth in Asia is safe because what if you get a kid caught in one of those traps and can't get back home? Because when they go running around playing, you know, and I don't really want to see a kid get hurt or anything like that. Managed hunt has risks. If, if an arrow ricochets, it still has a risk to the public. The, the open archery hunt, same principle. But when you look at the non-lethal solutions, those have risks to public safety as well that we need to consider. And look at the deer vehicle collisions that we have on the screen. Personal experience, when I was younger, I know an individual that was a couple of years younger than me in grade school, never came back to school. I didn't know, I didn't find out till later. It was because she was coming home from Walmart with her mom, the car in front of them hit a deer, it rolled over the top and caved through the windshield and killed her. That can happen. I understand that maybe not at 35 miles an hour, but it does happen. You catch the wrong male during mating season or the wrong female during birthing season, they may kick you, they may beat you up pretty soon. You may get gored. So there is no option that is 100% perfect when it comes to public safety, unfortunately. I wish I could, I could wave a magic wand and give you a perfect answer.
My, my question was, what is it, is there a benefit to the community of doing nothing?
They can continue to watch the deer and I know there are members of the public that thoroughly enjoy that. And, and that is a big thing. So I'm not going to discount their opinion on that. I think that's a fair opinion, but they're going to continue to tear up the grass, tear up the trees, cause vehicle accidents, but yeah.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
That's the best I could come up with on that one.
Anybody else have any questions, Dustin?
I want to thank you for a great thorough presentation.
Appreciate it.
And thank the council for a great discussion, some great questions. Thank the citizens for the questions they ask us that we passed on to you. And I think it was very well covered. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is appearances by advisory board applicants. And I think there are a couple of them here this evening. Chatez? The nice thing about having a, a sign in chief, I know who everybody is.
How's it going today?
Good. How are you?
Good. I'm doing well, thank you. My name is Chatez Robinson and I live at 402 South Allen. I come to you today, city council members, asking you to consider my application for the vacancy on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. I feel that I am a good candidate for this position because, I mean, I bring an open mind in this. I don't look the same as everybody else. I have a different perspective than most and I'm willing to learn. And most importantly, like, here within the last two years, serving my community was just like something in the back of my head that I always felt like that I would do like later on in life, when I was like more settled in my career and everything like that. But life has its twists and turns where it can just take you anywhere. So now, within the past two years, it just became a goal of mine, an analysis priority. So basically what I'm looking to do with this position is just basically contribute to Cape Girardeau in the best positive way that I can. And with my perspective, knowing from everybody else around me, I feel like I can do that. So I mean, I know I'm young and everybody has their reservations about people being young. I know what Mr. Charlie said. I heard him. He was like, the commitment thing, the school, like, I get it. I am a full-time student right now. I'm pursuing my undergraduate at CMO right now, criminal justice, of course. But yeah, I'm committed to this. I'm committed to this process. I want to see what comes after and do my part to help Cape Girardeau.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Thanks. Kent Ward?
Good evening.
How you do, sir?
I'm fine. My name is Kent Ward. I appreciate the opportunity to come before Mayor Fox and the council this evening. I'm here in regards to the vacancy on the Parks and Rec Board, obviously. I'm a resident of Cape Girardeau and have been since 1986. I attended Notre Dame High School in Southeast Missouri State. My wife Jennifer is an RN at Southeast Hospital in Cape and has been for 22 years. I have two children, age 12 and 10, Parker and Brayden, and they attend St. Vincent's DePaul Elementary School. Back in 2007 and eight, I served on the golf course advisory board for a while. Regrettably, some health issues, I had to cut that term short. But during that time, I got to help with the campaign to get the half, half cent sales tax increase passed and I had a good time with that. That was a lot of fun. Spent some evenings up at Danny Essner's office on the, on the phone, making some calls and trying to get some positive feedback from that. And since then, you know, I've, I've become a father. I have two kids, obviously, and I'm involved in Cape youth sports. I coach basketball and baseball, so there's not many weeks, I'm not at the sports plex for many hours or the, the baseball fields and I've enjoyed all of that. I think that what makes me a good candidate is my skill set for business. I can bring that to the, to the, to the table. If you, excuse me, if selected, you could expect me to dedicate my time and my energy to the position and I won't be scared to roll up my sleeves and get things done. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I don't think there's anybody else here for advisory boards. Any appearances for anything that is not on the agenda this evening? Any appearances for anything not on the agenda? If not, we'll move into agenda review. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. We have a public hearing tonight for rezoning of 1246 and 1248 Meadowbrook Lane from an M2 to an M1. So we'll be having that public hearing tonight. And then we have, on our consent agenda, we have some second and third readings. The first one is an item number four, item number three for the abatement of nuisance on Henderson Street. This is some boarding up, enclosure of some buildings that we need to get the abatement in the tax bill. Number four is stop signs. Remember, we did that new stop signs primarily in, in subdivision, new subdivisions, but we do had, did add one at Bloomfield in Minnesota, going from a part-time four-way to all-the-time four-way stop. And then we have the, no parking any time in those other subdivisions. That is number five. Number six will be the performance guarantee for Rock Garden subdivision. Seven is a performance guarantee for the locks of Dalhousie Phase Five. Eight is a performance guarantee for Touchdown Ridge. So it's that time of year when we're getting those performance guarantees is, or people getting ready to start construction. Number nine is the housing agreement for the Humane Society. This is our yearly agreement with them. It contains a 2% increase in the contribution to the Humane Society for the work that they do. Number 10 is the author, is the acceptance of snow removal equipment out at the airport. And 11 appoints Dustin Zeebold as our city treasurer pursuant to our ordinance. So that's an appointment needed due tonight. Is there any of those items you'd like to remove from consent agenda or make any other claims?
No.
All right. Our new ordinances, we have just three. We have the first reading of the rezoning for the hearing on Meadowbrook. And then we have the reading of the urban deer hunting ordinance. I know you have a couple of, sounded like you had a couple of amendments you wanted to make on that, so we'll entertain those at the time of that first reading. And then number 14 is amendment to chapter 25, the code of ordinances regarding administrative relief and acceptance. This is a, this will allow us to make administrative relief for exceptions due to where we are buying property or getting easements for property in our construction projects. Oftentimes we'll sit down with a business and they'll, as part of that, that negotiations, they need to have administrative relief, say, to have less parking spots than is below our requirement. And so in the past, we would have to then take that to and through the entire process. And, you know, our, our plan of zoning and board of adjustments is very good to, to make those adjustments, but this will allow us to do it administratively. Now, it does not, you know, it does not waive our ability just to do it. We, we have to still go through all the same questions that we submit to them. We have to confirm that, that it does meet that standard and then we can document that and we'll let also those boards know that we've done that administratively. So this just is, allows us to be a little more streamlined in those discussions and, and do it in a, in a more streamlined way and, and fashion. So that's what we're asking for in number 14. Then we have the appointments to the tree board tonight. And I believe if you have, don't have any other business, then we have no closed session tonight. So I believe that's all, Mayor.
Okay. At this point, we'll move into regular session. The special call is set. A real call. Bob Fox?
Here.
Robbie Gard?
Here.
Stacy Kinder?
Yes.
Shelley Moore?
Yes.
Dan Presson?
Here.
Nate Thomas?
Here.
Shannon Truxell?
Here.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Nate. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We have one public hearing tonight, a public hearing to consider the request to rezone property at 1246 and 1248 Meadowbrook Lane from M2 Heavy Manufacturing Industrial District to M1 Light Manufacturing Industrial District. Anybody here this evening to speak?
No.
On behalf of the public hearing?
I don't even think they showed up.
Don't see anyone, so I will close the public hearing. Okay. Appearances regarding items on the agenda this evening.
Good evening. Thank you for answering a lot of the questions that I sent you earlier, asking those questions.
I know, we know you. Would you please state your name so I can record?
Renita Green. So I have a few more questions and things that weren't answered. And Section B1, it says that this policy applies to archery devices. It is limited to hunting and target shooting is permitted under this ordinance. And so my question is, what are the rules for target shooting? Where does target shooting happen? Is that happening on the public property? Is that happening at people's homes? I think that bears some conversation there.
That should not have been in there, Renita.
Okay. And then archery devices is a vague term. Other cities, and maybe I'll start by telling you that I've read about 10 different cities' ordinances before I came here tonight. So I won't remember exactly who said what, but a lot of the other ordinances defined what archery devices were. Also did research on what archery devices are because I didn't really know so much. But there are air-powered archery devices, and those are not recommended to be used within city limits. And some ordinances that are written by communities exclude air-powered, specifically exclude those. So that might be something to consider.
Excuse me, the term, those terms are, Renita, are defined in Section, I believe it's 17-94.
Oh, okay.
That is already in the code right now.
Oh, okay. Is that just not part of this?
Yeah, it's just not part of this because this is just changes.
I see. Okay, thank you. And number five, it specifies the hunting permits. The MDC also has special archery permits. And my recommendation would be that people would have to have an archery permit in addition to the hunting permit?
You have to.
I'm sorry?
You have to.
You have to, because that's not stated in here.
Well, it's part of the state of Missouri's law. Whenever you, I can have a hunting permit, sorry. I can have a hunting permit, but to also do archery or gun, I have to have one of those specific, sorry.
That's okay. When I talked to her at the thing today, she made it sound like it was optional.
So sometimes we get some terms in our legal. There is a hunting license that we obtain and then a hunting permit, which is for deer specifically. The hunting license is open, so you have a small game and a large game license. The license is what authorizes you to pursue a game, but you need the actual deer hunting permit, which is a separate item to chase, or to pursue whitetail deer. And then for the managed hunt, there is an actual hunting permit specifically for those dates and locations.
Right. And then she said that you have to like turn that in. It's only good for that date and like the number of deer or something, right? But then there's an archery license, an archery permit that you can get as well. It's through the Missouri Department of Conservation.
Those are not valid terms. Those are outside city limits. This is a managed term.
So we don't need to have people?
You do not.
Certified. Okay. Number six, no, we answered that. Let me go down. Number eight, this paragraph where it says that it will, about the parking. Other communities also require that the vehicles have in their windshields a sign that says "Hunting in Progress"?
That's already taken care of with a decal they have to have on their dashboard.
Okay. I didn't see that in writing here. And number nine, other community, about where they're to stand. Other communities have specifically, like almost every other ordinance specifically says that it doesn't allow for the standing on vehicles. So I don't know if that's like a thing for hunters to stand on vehicles, to elevate themselves to shoot.
Not in southeast Missouri.
So, yeah.
They have to be on a stand 10 feet above the ground.
Okay. So it was, it was just interesting that all the other communities had that specifically. So, you know, if that was a thing, then maybe we should consider that. Those questions were answered. Thank you for lifting the issue of the homeless population. I sent that to you. Clearing the property a week before the hunt would probably not suffice if we want to make sure that we're not accidentally hunting our unsheltered friends. We'd probably have to, you know, like, check it the night before, the day before, or something, and put like "Hunting in Progress"? I mean, they're used to seeing no trespassing signs.
There will be, there will be signs.
That say "Hunting in Progress"? Okay. Number two of subsection C, other communities specify how many yards away from a vehicle-dwelling house, church, school, playground. And the average was about 200 yards. So I think it would be helpful to have that inserted. And number five, with the H, the way this is written, I mean, we already talked about that some, but technically, the way this is written, a 17-year-old and an 18-year-old can be out hunting together. So if we specify that, the language in the ordinance from 2012 said that anyone under the age of 18 would have to be with a parent or guardian and only on 10 acres if the hunt was on 10 acres. And other policies, other communities have an age of 21 to be able to hunt. So that's something to think about. And then if it's the younger person under the age of 18, hunter? I'm like totally new to hunting culture and was really surprised that like 11-year-olds can get hunting permits. So theoretically, if this 11-year-old is going out with an 18-year-old, is the 11-year-old also a hunter? And so is that like two hunters on one permit? And is that the intent? And if not, is there some way of like maybe, you know, working with that language so that we don't have 11-year-olds out hunting with their big brothers or sisters or something?
The language prior, this state of area of guardian. Unfortunately, what it didn't say was hunter-certified individual. I felt for the sake of safety, I would rather have an 18-year-old who's hunter-certified than went through proper protocol than a parent or guardian that's ever even seen.
But if we're writing the language, then we can say that, right? We can say a hunter-certified parent or guardian.
Yes, we can control the language.
Excuse me, I might point out that on that place that you're referring to in C5, it talks about the 18-years-old individual. And then it says unless such person is in the immediate presence of a properly licensed adult hunter who is at least 18 years of age or older and has in his possession that certification. So an 11-year-old certified could not accompany the 18-year-old that was not. So that language is covered there, it appears to.
So the 11-year-old who has a hunter's?
The person would have to be more than 18 and be certified to accompany the other 18-year-old.
Okay, so nobody under the 18 can be out hunting?
No.
Oh, okay.
Well, unless you are with the other person that is 18 or more, that is certified.
Right, so an 11-year-old could be with an 18-year-old?
Yes.
All certified?
They all have to be certified.
The one person that is 11 would not necessarily have to be as long as they were with somebody that was 18 or older that was certified.
I'm saying the 18-year-old's got to be certified.
But by definition, the 11-year-old's not going to be the hunter. They're just going with their dad.
That was my question. Are they the hunter?
The underage individual can be the hunter?
But, well, they could be as long as they had passed all of the rules and regulations to hunt in the state of Missouri to begin with.
Under the Embarassment of Law, you put that out. They are under the guardianship of the adult.
Well, I think we're going to change that anyway.
We have been discussing.
We've been discussing that sidebar.
Okay.
Yeah, that's definitely.
Okay, I already said about the archer edu, oh, I just mentioned the archer education. And B1, the hunter education, the MDC said that they, the last time this came up, that they had an archer education program. But then since it got turned over, nobody ever took part in it. But maybe utilizing their archery education program for people who are hunting in urban areas. You know, I realize that things might be different when they're hunting, when people are hunting in, outside of urban areas, but we're talking about people hunting in our communities. And I think that upping the requirements and making it a little bit more stringent is acceptable. And then, and then I added in the liability insurance. Manchester, Missouri added that in as well. I heard what the conversation was. I just, you know, if a person or property is damaged and then they have to pursue the civil suit against it, that's putting the burden on the person who was damaged. If the person who is the damager is carrying the liability insurance, then they're responsible for making sure that the damage they cause is taken care of. When we rent a stinking park shelter, we got to carry a million dollars liability insurance. So we're talking about people hunting on city property. And, you know, like this is a lot more dangerous than anything we do at the park shelter. So I don't think that this is an unrealistic thing to consider. And then I was curious about what happens with the deer retrieval. So if a deer is injured and it's not retrieved, then what happens with it? Is it just like running around injured? And then what if it like, does it just eventually die somewhere out there?
It happens, yeah.
Is that just, I just don't know. Is that what happens? And then it just kind of like the park is rotched out there?
Usually there are many pilots around to take care of that.
Yeah.
That's currently what's happening with them.
Yeah, okay.
So that's what the issue is.
That was just a question. I just, you know. So the field cleaning thing really gave me a lot of pause. And I wasn't really sure. I thought I knew what it was. And I pulled up a YouTube video and it's really not what you want to see. It's not exciting footage. So I'm wondering why that has to happen on the public land, you know, in the, out in the open like that? Is there a reason why deer can't be taken back to the person's house to be gutted and cleaned?
Yes.
Yeah, I understand that, Stacy. But, but, but other policies have kind of strict, have specified what is supposed to happen with the deer innards. And one, one community had a provision for them to be buried in the ground. But every other one talked about making sure that they were removed. And that was specifically in the ordinance. So ours doesn't say anything about that. But, you know, with this being public land, you know, having, I don't know.
I might point out that in F2, it says any person who kills any deer while hunting shall not field dress the deer in a public or conspicuous location. So it does say that.
So does that specifically mean that they're supposed to not clean it on the public land?
This is its public land.
Well, right.
I think easily viewable.
I think that's like their duty.
Field dressing animals in a hospital to prevent any type of disease that's going to affect these needs.
That's why I was wondering, is there like a reason you have to do that right away?
Yes, and needs to stay as cold as possible. So there are, the MDC has specific rules and regulations about field dressing that aren't actually identified in this ordinance, but they are on the website that are easy to look at.
And then maybe if we just added something about the removal of the stuff that they clean up? I don't know. I mean, that's in all the other policies, so it just, yeah.
I don't think it's necessary, but generally, you don't, you leave it behind.
It gets eaten?
Yeah.
Yes. Possums? How many possums do you see around this city?
Okay. Okay, okay. I'm tied, like this is not my field, so this is not my thing here. I don't need to know that I may ever had a live one.
Renita, I didn't know, man.
So now, I'm almost, I only have two more things. So the interference under G, so to add a three. Other policies have in it transportation of the deer from the hunt site to wherever they're going. And it says like no transportation should be done unless the deer is covered. And it, there's some language that talks about specifically with a tarp or something like that. So, you know, maybe that bears some.
I don't think that's a big deal.
Really?
No.
It's okay to just like take a gutted deer across town?
It's already happened.
It's already happened. I've seen him at a gas station.
Okay, different world, different, different stuff, okay. And then back to the penalties, I actually had already a note there. And I understand if this is a municipal, these are municipal penalties. But if they're municipal penalties, then it seems like, isn't there some way? I mean, we're the municipal, right? So can?
The state tells us how much those have to be.
The state, the state governs the municipal penalties?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so these were the exact same as what they were in 2012? So they've not increased since 2012?
Just the opposite. They've done, they've done just the opposite. And they've made it very, very difficult for cities to enforce their ordinances.
Wow, okay. So, and then my final thing is that we, there was conversation several times about this being for just one year. But there's no end date on this. And I think, you know, I know we don't get to vote on this. But, you know, like, having that this is good for one year and we're reevaluating it? Or, you know, I don't even know if that's, you know, in terms of the legalities of how ordinance language is written. But when you say it's going to be for a year and then it's not, it's not written that way, it kind of doesn't look like the intent is for it to really just be a year. And that, you know, we're not.
We know that. We've talked about that already.
And, and then finally, I will just say that I am not comfortable with urban hunting. You know, part of that is coming from the place of not being a hunter and just, you know, having those kinds of apprehensions because I don't have those experiences. But I think urban hunting is a slippery slope. I was a lot more comfortable when I saw the areas that are defined for the hunting. But I will never be in favor of us hunting in Capaha Park and Arena Park and those areas, those more highly populated areas.
Neither were we.
And so, you know, and just seeing conversation that has happened is going back and forth. There are people who think that that's where the hunting should take place because the deer population is more populated in that area. But if this passes, I'm sure that there would be a referendum to overturn it if we started to move out into the more populated areas.
Watch the coffee can. Who's next? Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm here with Randall McFlane.
Hi, Randall. Thanks for putting up with us.
No problem. Most of you, most of the people here at the city of Cape know me by Mac. I worked for the city for 42 years. I read the article in the paper. And I understand why you're starting to hunt on the east side of Cape. I brought these from my home. I live at 3619 Julie Drive. These are deer in my father-in-law's backyard at 402 Lorain. These are deer in my father-in-law's yard in 402 Lorain and in the area that we live in. This was recently when it snowed. And this was before the snow melted. There's close to 20 deer right there.
I know.
This one decided to lay down in my backyard last year and just stay there for a while. I've actually had them walk up and look into the window at me at night while I've been watching TV. They are everywhere.
They put off my doorbell alarm every night.
Do they? Okay. They have destroyed several flower beds in the area. The bucks have racked the trees to the point that I have lost. The bucks have racked the trees to the point that I have lost two Japanese maples, crape myrtles, and I don't know how many other plants and, and things that my wife has planted. They do like to eat her knockout roses when they bloom that are right there at my back door. They leave tracks everywhere, they eat new grass when it's planted. We can't have a garden in the neighborhood because once it starts to come up, they eat it all. I have seen as many in the field behind my house as 35 deer at one time. The field that borders my home, everybody sees it when they go on the interstate going north there at Route K. That's the 12 acres that the Kirchnerfer's own and maintain and farm. Some years it's in corn, some years it's in soybeans, some years there's winter wheat in it, and some years it's in hay. I have spoke to both Joe and Eddie Kirchnerfer about the problem. The deer are tearing up their field. They'd like to see them gone. I have a handwritten proposal for Dustin, to give to Dustin this evening if he wants it, or I'll have it typed up and then bring it to him. I did not have time to get that done. But, uh, they are willing to let seasoned hunters hunt that area during the time that the city specifies. They are also willing to cooperate with the conservation agency in any way and form. It is a 12-acre plot of ground. There are no houses around, there are no kids around. The closest house is mine, Kevin Bulow's and Jeff Cox's house. We border the property that runs all the way to Vantage Drive. Myself, uh, my father-in-law, my brother-in-law, my other brother-in-law, and his son, we are all seasoned veteran hunters. We are all well over the age of 20 years old. Myself being almost 65 now, my father-in-law being 81, and my brother-in-law being 60, all of us are very seasoned hunters. We know the Kirchnerfers very well. They would agree to let us hunt that ground, put the stands up, and then take them down after December 5th. We would, uh, follow the city's guidelines, the conservation's guidelines, and take does. The doe population there in the area that I live in is enormous. This past year, I watched three does bring out twin fawns, six deer plus fawns, all at one time in the field. If this continues, the population in that area is gonna become enormous. With the building of Veterans Memorial Drive, the Hunsey Farm being subdivisioned out now, and the push down on the west side of town, especially with MODOC taking out the trees there along the interstate, the deer are pushing harder and harder into our neighborhood. I've seen in Dr. Rube's driveway, 15 deer at one time at the end of Ferraro Drive. We, as family members, we have property that we hunt that belongs to us that's outside of Cape Girardeau. But we'd also like to be able to maintain our yards and take care of our property, and at this rate, the deer in that area are just overrunning.
I, I will tell you that there are many, many areas in Cape and the center of town that are just as bad.
Yes, sir, I do know that.
And we are, we are attempting to begin to control this population with a managed hunt, starting on a small scale, seeing how it goes. We evaluate it after the first year and see--
Yes, sir.
And we'll move forward. It could be that in future years, we, we could expand that to other areas.
Right.
Let us start small first.
Well, that's why--
And let's keep the public safety in mind first.
Always, always, sir. I'm, I'm a very safe hunter.
I understand that, but--
I, I don't, I don't wanna start this, uh, this 12 acres or, or the property or any other hunts until the city is, is assured of what they're doing at this point in time. My proposal to give to Dustin is for future use and future to look at.
Okay, that'd be good.
That's all it's intended.
Okay.
As it is written, it's very short. If you want, I can read it to you. And what I'm proposing is that if a landowner who is willing to let seasoned and qualified doe hunters, specified by name by the landowner, hunt his or her property in cooperation with the city and the Department of Conservation, and following all guidelines set by doe, hunt said property. Hunting on these properties would only be during November 1st through December 5th, with each specified hunter only hunting seven days. If the property owner does not have five qualified hunters to fill the weeks, then those weeks would be closed and no hunting would be permitted on that property that week. Hunters would have to follow the set guidelines of taking one doe and then one any deer permit. Yeah, any hunter not specified by the landowner caught hunting that area will be reported to the proper authorities. Hunters must provide their own stands, and those stands must be 10 feet or higher off the ground. No blinds permitted, all stands must be removed after December 5th by the hunter. No permit, permanent stands are to be built on the owner's property.
I, you don't have to read all of it to us. If you, if you'll give that to us, give it to Dustin, we'll keep it for future use, and we'll go from there.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Randall.
Appreciate it. How's retirement? You didn't hear me? Miss Bonnie?
Oh, my, no, my neighbor.
I know you. You look a little different than you used to last. Deer didn't, a deer didn't knock you down, did it?
Uh, it is deer, it's deer related.
No, it's not.
In, in a, in a roundabout way, Bonnie Coy Swenson, 1506 Price Drive, Ward 1, and Dan, you will be hearing from me, and I, I, I love that y'all are, are doing, are, are at least bringing this up in a reasonable, you know, thorough, safe, you know, way. Y'all heard my talk back in October where I brought up all, most of those same points that, that, is it Dustin?
Dustin, yeah.
Yeah, that, that was wonderful. I really had no clue about the bird flyway thing. That was super cool to know that they're also getting impacted. Again, we, we, they eat so much down, and then the invasives come in, and, and then all those other little critters that also, you know, probably have nice little names like Thumper and Rocky, and, you know, those little critters don't have any food either. Of course, we know the E. coli, that years ago, there were a few things going on like in strawberry patches and stuff, you know, out west. There's no reason why E. coli couldn't be then in the gardener's, you know, in your own home backyard. And as Mr. McLean said, the gardening thing is huge, the landscaping thing, and especially now with COVID, everyone knows that like the, the incident of getting pets, you know, went up, that everybody went and adopted pets, but my husband being a professor of horticulture and me also being a horticulturist, we know for a fact that the greenhouse sales went up and also throughout the United States because we have nursery contacts. And so then I'm just waiting for all those poor people who spent a ton of money for landscapes to just then get so discouraged that they got eaten down. And, you know, I just can't say it again. I, I'm thrilled that y'all are, are trying this, and I'm more than willing to, because Ward 1 is my ward, I am gonna probably, hopefully be impacted the most. I also do agree with some of the non-lethal ways too, like more signage, except for, of course, that's more for us because, you know, the deer can't read, so, you know, whenever they make those little things where the, the cougars or other things in other states, you know, they don't necessarily go under the overpass, you know, I mean, but they are still a nuisance, and yes, my leg is a testament to it. We adopted a new dog. He's a three-year-old Basset Hound, and he has no command knowledge or anything. And so about 6:00 AM on January 20th, he was out in the yard, and he wasn't coming back to me like I wanted to, and it was 28 degrees, and of course, I was just in my, you know, sleep clothes and a robe and my plastic gardening clogs, and I did slip and I broke my leg, but what, the reason that I was even going towards him was because I couldn't get him away from my eight-foot fence that Planning and Zoning so nicely approved this past summer that cost just slightly under $10,000, because there was, there was a deer on the other side of the fence. And so, so yes, indirectly the deer did do this. But that's because I have now put up this eight-foot fence, and now they've chosen to go a different way, and now they're annoying a different neighbor that has been complaining. So I'm just thrilled that y'all are doing this, that's all. And again--
It's a, it's a beginning.
It's a beginning, exactly, and safety is always priority. I have a question about this survey that y'all had out front.
Yes.
Is this something that you want returned tonight, or is this for a future, like you want them mailed back?
It's, it's an online survey that I think you just laid some copies out there. Yes.
Well, I'm certain--
Just together, just, just together input.
And when do you want it returned by?
I don't know, Nicolette, did you put a date on that when we put it on the--
Before your next meeting, so you would have time to act on any--
Okay, okay, okay. All right, certainly, I can, I can certainly get people to do that, because, one last thing, you know, I'm on Keep Cape Beautiful with Shannon, and the reason we planted all those daffodils back in fall was because deer don't eat daffodils, okay? That was number one. Number two, I'm on the garden, I'm with garden clubs, and what are we doing at Capaha Park? We're redesigning the rose garden. We're not even gonna call it a rose garden anymore because we can't have roses because of the deer issue. No, I don't agree shooting in Capaha Park either. We have to, you know, thin from the outside, and hopefully those ones that are inside will, you know, eventually just pass away. But, um, the, the, the new plan for Capaha, now we have to be thinking of plants that are deer resistant, which we know are not necessarily, so that's gonna be an expense in itself, is looking up all that stuff, not that there's great lists out there, but I am thrilled, and that's all. Just thank you, and I'll make sure we get this a few back to you.
Thank you.
And, you know, thanks for recognizing me.
Keith? You're just sitting back there so patiently and digity, and you just can't wait to get up here and talk, I know it.
Yeah, well, this isn't the first time I've been up here. I think last time I was with the city council, when we were going through this before. And at that point, my name's Keith Lear. I live 1829 Old Sprague Street Road. I also own the adjoining park property, 1833 Old Sprague Street Road. My property about surrenderes, and I think, when you see your chart there, I'm pretty much right on the southern part of your biggest area where all the deer are. And I was with the Cape, the Keep Cape Safe Amendment, the initiative thing that we had back in 2012. So obviously, I don't think hunting deer is a good idea, but I'm not gonna deny that we definitely probably need to look at it, get a realistic count, you know? I, I'm not, I also wanted to say thank this gentleman right here for an extensive amount of work that he did, and a lot of that was same stuff that we saw that you guys did prior to this, so I just wanna say thank you for that, and thank you guys for letting me come up here and talk to y'all. I've lived there for over 20 years, down in this area. I've seen, oh gosh, probably 10 sets of double fawns come out of the woods out there in surrenderes. They're beautiful. Nothing like coming across them sitting in the grass in the morning.
I don't, we don't deny they're, God's creatures are beautiful.
And I've, you know, I've, uh, driven around in that area for, I lived right up on Mason Street for a number of years, so I've driven in this area of town extensively for 25 years, pretty much as long as I've lived here. As, as, as a matter of fact, I think I'm actually driving your 1998 Jimmy.
Good deed.
I bought it from Bob White down at, uh, down, down at the dealership, down from Block River. I've been fortunate, I've only actually clipped one deer once my entire time.
You're lucky, because I clipped three of them in 2010.
Well, and, and actually, it was kinda misleading, misleading the article because they made it sound like you were just sitting in there and they struck your vehicle.
Well, no.
You know, so I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure it wasn't that way, but it's kind of a, I can't see you sitting at the stop sign and just all of a sudden, wham! You know, I just, I don't think that's the way it works.
No.
I understand that. There's no doubt, we need to do something. I just, the problem I have with it, and it's the same problem I had eight years ago when I was here, doe hunting, yeah, it's extremely ineffective. You know, depending on the statistics you look at, I went back online again today and looked, and you know, hunting organizations will say that, oh my gosh, you know, you hit a deer pretty much every time they die, you know, and all the ones that do go, they are recovered. Now, by recovered, that means that the hunter who shot it actually found it, not someone the next day by a creek in their yard saw a dead deer. So these numbers are kind of, you know, you don't know. You can go to the animal rights things, and they say, oh, you know, one out of two deer, you know, you know, they never get, they always run, you know, you never kill them. So you can't really take the statistics, you gotta take a grain of salt with them, you know? I'd like to see you guys seriously do something as far as counting the number, establishing a realistic thing. If 80 is gonna be the max that, that we're looking at, that's fine, you know, you're gonna have one guy go out there, he can get two deer, so that's 40 tags you're gonna give out a year for 80 deer? I mean, I, I don't see, at that rate, it's gonna be 50 years before we're reducing the population, you know, on the very outskirts of town. I think a more appropriate way of doing it would be to hire someone to come in and take them out effectively, humanely, sanely. I just can't see a bunch of amateurs running around public land with a crossbow, shooting, 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 shooting. Eventually, it's gonna die. That's the ones that they chase after. Now, the ones that they don't chase after that run off onto another piece of property, well, I mean, I don't know. There's another aspect for me on this, one is the effectiveness, and two, and this wasn't one we really looked at before, was when there's gonna be someone, I don't have my phone with me, but when there's someone out there and that deer comes running through the yard with three bows, arrows sticking out of it, and that person goes on Facebook and goes, I'm posting that on social media, and we got a group of people driving down the interstate who are gonna spend their disposable tax dollars, disposable dollars, on tourist money here in Cape Girardeau, they're gonna say, let's see kinda towns Cape is. Well, here's a bunch of guy got a fucking, uh, funk, 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 shooting deer and people, shooting, shooting deers with arrows in the city limits. Let's go to Perryville, see what they're doing. You know, this gentleman right here, Mr. Thomas, asked, what are the benefits of having deer? Couldn't really come up with any, they're pretty. I don't know, there's 175 acres located on the north side of Cape Girardeau for sale in this very area where all these deer are. Maybe we could put something new for Cape Girardeau. This is the best we can come up with, is all we can do is kill them. Maybe we charge $10 for people to come feed them deer corn, and we make some tax dollars through Cape Girardeau. You know, as opposed to the 40 people you're gonna get to spend their tax dollars, to spend their money here and go to shooters. That's it. Or we could have somebody come into town, go to that 175-acre park that you guys are gonna build on the north side of town with the botanical gardens and the deer sanctuary, and a big lake where people can fish. At 40 years from now, when this area in that part of town looks like St. Louis, we'll have 170-something acre park up there, a beautiful green spot in the middle of a dirty city. And your guys will be the names on there that say, we came up with this idea 40 years from now.
Yeah.
I don't know.
We gotta have somebody donate the land.
Well, hey, listen, go find me a counter, we need 3.4 mil. Come on now. All I know is for me, if you wanted to charge me and just specifically me a little bit in my taxes to cover a sharpshooter to stand 10 feet up and take out deer effectively and humanely on the north, way up there on the north side of town while shooting towards the river with that gun, I'll pay a little extra in my taxes, and I bet I can find a lot of people in Cape who will too to cover those costs. Because I just can't see you guys out there making pincushions out of deer. And that's what happens. It's not a very effective way to kill an animal unless you're willing to chase it and follow it off that private property onto some-- follow it off that private property, onto some private, off that public property, onto some private property. So, you know, you guys got a chance right here, right now, to say something different, you know? Let's not kill something, let's not think like it's 1950, let's think towards 2050.
We've looked at a lot of options, sharpshooters.
Oh, well, and the thing is, is I already know, just by looking at you, what the answer is. And if this goes through, I'm gonna sell my property and move somewhere else, because I certainly don't wanna live in a town where this is the best option you can come up with. And more than half the people are gonna vote for it. That's not me. And after 25-plus years living here, like I said, if this is the best y'all can do, then I'm gonna look for digs elsewhere. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you, Keith. And I believe we have one more. Charles Cruz? Did I pronounce that right?
Yes. My name's Charles Cruz, 1900 Block Ben Road. I have some questions, actually. Did you exclude the white, the albino's, are they excluded from this?
They are not, we can't be.
Why not?
Because the state constitution says the Missouri Department of Conservation controls the animals.
Well, first off, they have no camouflage, they have no protection, and that's kinda, if you know what I'm trying to say there. Okay, uh, is it five individual hunting sessions, five different days, or is it, I couldn't see the screen very well.
Five different...
It is, it is five consecutive seven-day periods.
Five sevens.
Five consecutive seven-day periods, so it would be, for example, moving from the first through the seventh.
Five weeks, five consecutive weeks.
Yeah.
In 35 days, in other words.
Yes.
Right.
Okay, uh, the maps you showed us, where can I, can obtain some of those?
We can get you one.
I like one of each area if it's possible. Like, I've lived in Cape for 70 years, and I, I guess I'm a local, I don't know.
I'd say you are.
I wasn't born here, but that's beside the point. But I've lived in the north end of town all my life, it's a pretty area. Okay, this was voted down, I think about seven, eight years ago, was put on a ballot for the people to vote on, and they voted down some...
Actually, it was approved by the council and then brought back by the public and voted down.
It was put on the ballot?
Yep. Yes.
Right. I, I worked on that campaign, I had a guy say, you can't do this, I said, I will put it on the ballot, you say yes or no, that's just the way I feel about it, it's just, I mean, that's the way it should be done, the people should have the final say, in my opinion. All righty. Uh, see, my private property, can they come in on my property and hunt?
No.
I've got about 15 acres.
No.
Okay, I post it, then it's off limits.
It's off limits.
Okay. Uh, like I said, it's tough to vote it the first time, and it failed.
Charles, here's a copy of those maps, if you want them.
Okay, I want, want, one of every...
There's one of every area there, if you wanna come up and get them after you're done.
Can we put it on our city website? The whole presentation will be posted on the city website.
I'm just gonna give him these.
Sure, sure. I have just for general knowledge.
I mean, those are not real clear copies, but that tells you about the topic.
Okay?
Trying to get this short and sweet. I've asked the city several times, when you come over Ben Road out there at 1900, to post, they've got one down there by, uh, Cape Rock Drive, but I've asked for more deer crossing signs, and I've, I've never had any more response on it. I've got an area there, they run right across from Ferguson Drive, they go across there, and...
I'll continue that conversation. I'll continue that conversation.
That's his ward, so he will, he'll take care of that.
Okay, uh, speed limit. I live out there, and those people go 80 miles an hour through there. We had a man, last week, he came over, uh, Ben Road, he took out a light pole there to make a call. Two garbage cans, went on past my driveway, got down, got the third garbage can, jumped two 10-foot ditches, hit a tree, wound up in this man's front yard. Now, he wasn't driving no 45, 50 mile an hour. I think it needs to be patrol mode, is what I'm trying to say, I guess.
Dan, can you take care of contacting?
If I'm at my driveway, I go to pull out, I see a car coming over the hill, or one coming up the hill, I don't pull out. Because by the time you get straightened up and go, they're on your, they're on ya, plain and simple. Okay, uh, okay, the Kelsall Birds things where, anybody familiar with that?
Yes.
Is that off limits?
Yes.
Good, because my property...
It's off limits.
Uh, but to that. Okay, I think that's pretty well, the questions I had there to answer.
Okay.
Is this more or less the cut and dried deal that after the third reading it's gonna happen?
Well, at, to the second and third reading, it'll happen, but that's two weeks, that's, we have a first reading tonight, and in two weeks, do the second and third reading.
So, in other words, to put on a ballot, that won't happen?
No.
Why not?
Because it's not something we can put on a ballot.
It was before?
No. The council passed it last time, and then the people put it on the ballot because they wanted it, wanted it overturned.
We need petition groups up, if we don't, if we don't want...
That's right.
And get so many signatures or whatever.
Right. But it has to be...
No, it's pass first, and then you...
Has to pass first.
And then you would do a recall.
Then you do a, basically, a petition to overturn that.
Well, gentlemen, I think you've, uh, give me a, give a little bit of insight on what I'm wanting to know. Personally, I enjoy them. I mean, I know there's a lot of them. They went down there on Lexington, put all those apartments in, took all that Russian olive out, boy, they got thicker. Then there's got, some man went out here on Lexington and Ben Road, he cleared a bunch that out, I guess it's developed to sell it, boy, they just got thicker. I mean, it's not the deer's fault.
No, it's not.
Plain and simple.
It's not.
Somebody comes and runs you out of your house, you're gonna go to the neighbor, it's gonna be, plain and simple, that's, that's the way it goes, but, like I said, I, personally, I'm not a tree hugger, but I'd see the other wildlife. And they, uh, personally, they, they got more right here than we do. Nah, not anyway, but...
All right, thank you, Charles.
Thank you for your time, and I've got up on my soapbox and sent my two cents worth, so...
Appreciate you coming.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Charles.
Ms. Ramona?
Pardon?
I was calling Ms. Ramona up. Almost overlooked, I knew you were on this list, I just went, you were first, and I went right down the list and missed you.
Happy Black History Month! Y'all excited? I can't wait to see what our city's gonna do for it. Anyways, I'm here because most of what, most of what I was gonna say, Renita, pretty much, Renita, I'm getting serious, Renita pretty much covered a lot of the things that I was about to say, but I just wanted to, Charlie, stop laughing. I just wanted to say, and a lot of the things that I heard other people say, I also agree with, uh, I was pretty much against, you know, any type of urban deer hunting, and I still pretty much am, but after hearing your presentation, which was really good, sorry we was being disruptive. Uh, um, that, it was very, made, it made it very, some things clear, that I was like, well, okay, well, it could possibly be too many deer running around. Me, like me, I'm, I'm okay with seeing the deer there in my backyard, the albino deer has been in my backyard. You know, I just like seeing them when they come through, or no one came through with her two babies and fed them in the backyard, it's like, we, the kids like, come look, you don't look out the window. So it's like an occasion when they come out, you know, so I would be sad, like, oh man, they're not gonna be here anymore, because they got killed.
They're always, they're always gonna be deer in this community.
Yeah, I know, and I realize that the number probably does need to go down, but I just don't feel comfortable with untrained people having these, and I know they said they think have to have this and have to have that, but I'm more like with that guy, if you can get like one or two people in here specifically trained who know what they're doing, but having a lot of people doing it, I just don't feel safe.
So you'd rather have people with guns come in town?
No, the, this, the, the crossbow things that they were talking about, not guns, no, and not the air shooters and nothing like that, I mean, I don't want them to have any of it, because even people have mishaps with firearms, so they can hurt themselves or somebody else still with, with the crossbows, no safety guarantee, there's never gonna be a safety guarantee. So I'm like, to keep it 100, just like, don't do it, but I mean, if we really, the plants mean that much to everybody, you know? I don't wanna leave anybody out, but you know, it's like, you got a fence back there, you know, but, you know, and if that's a lot of the issue, and I know everybody can't just grab up 10 grand and build them a fence, but, you know, if you can do it, it will help. Uh, but other than that, uh, yeah, so that's pretty much all I was gonna say, I think, it's pretty much covered. And so if you guys, sounds like you're gonna pass it, but I hope that, uh, all the other things that were brought up are, you know, put into that if you do decide to, and, you know, the people still might come forward and say, hey, we're gonna vote on this, and say, hey, we're gonna...
That's the people's right to do that, no matter what we decide.
That's our right to do that! That's our right to do that, people, if we don't want this, we, if they pass it, that means we get, we have to bring it up and vote, okay? We have to vote it down like we did the last time.
Oh, my gosh. You're a moron.
All right.
You want this big of a piece of a work in high school?
Yes, I want it!
Any, anybody else to speak before the council on this item?
One more thing, if I may, that we haven't really addressed. Okay, so, I'll make it quick. Uh, Bonnie, again, um, we have that ordinance that did come out after the boat got, you know, after the thing got turned down back in 2013 about not feeding the deer, and yet there are people in this town that feed deer.
You're right.
So, can we get that information at least out as well with all of this information that's already gonna be going out and people getting worried? And I actually tend to agree, let's just get one sharpshooter, bite the bullet, pay the price, um, because then at least we would have, then going forward, maybe, I don't know, because it seems like from what Esther's saying, it's gonna take quite a while to get it under control, and, and so maybe a sharpshooter first, and then, I don't know. But can we at least address that feeding of the deer? Because I have already seen one of my neighbors doing it, and I'm gonna say something to her, but I know that it's, we did pass something about...
You see him doing it, you can take pictures of it and report him.
Okay, okay.
All I can tell you...
And there's a fine or something?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Well, it would be something to bring up again, uh, because I don't think a lot of people...
Man, I make your neighbors real happy, but...
New people have moved the community too, and I love looking at Bambi, not, you know, from the ground where I broke my leg, but, but, but if we could bring that issue up again too, that, that it is illegal to feed the deer in town. Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you.
That's it. And I'll see you again in two weeks, right?
At this point, I think we'll do the consent agenda. Eric?
Bill number 21-11, an ordinance authorizing issuance of special tax bills on properties for the closure of dangerous buildings and for the abatement of nuisance under the provisions of Chapter 7 and Chapter 13 of the Code of Ordinances of Cape Girardeau. An ordinance authorizing issuance of special tax bills on properties for the closure of dangerous buildings and for the abatement of nuisance under the provisions of Chapter 7 and Chapter 13 of the Code of Ordinances of Cape Girardeau. Number 21-12, an ordinance amending Schedule C of Section 26-121 of the State Code by adding stop signs at various locations in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, an ordinance amending Schedule C of Section 26-121 of the State Code by adding stop signs at various locations in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 21-13, an ordinance amending Schedule F of Section 26-247 of the State Code by establishing no parking anytime at various locations in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, an ordinance amending Schedule F of Section 26-247 of the State Code by establishing no parking anytime at various locations in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 21-14, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a performance guarantee agreement with... Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill number 21-15, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a foreign scam or Terry agreement with EED Development LLC for the... Number 21-16, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a performance guarantee agreement with Meyer Properties LLC. 21-17, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a housing agreement with the Humane Society of Southeast Missouri and the Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
You have before you the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Nate. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. New ordinances. Bill number 21-18, an ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, by changing the zoning of property located at 1246 and 1248 Meadow Brook Lane in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri from M2 to M1.
Submove.
Motion by Robbie, seconded by Dan. Any discussion? This is the public hearing. Deal? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Bill number 21-19, an ordinance amending Chapter 17 of the Code of Ordinances in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, by adapting a new, by adopting a new section 17-104 relating to urban deer hunting.
Submove.
Motion by Robbie, seconded by Shannon. Discussion? Amendments?
I was gonna say, there's a number of amendments.
Okay.
Can we just start from the beginning?
Yes. Do you wanna go? Have you got it?
I agree. Let's start with, uh, subparagraph B1, removed, and remove target shooting permitted under this ordinance.
Second.
I would prefer you did them individually.
You have to do them individually. Motion by Shannon, seconded by Stacy. You wanna discuss this?
I think we need to discuss on that one. I think the, the whole purpose of this is for hunting only, not target shooting.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
It was an oversight, it was from the ordinance from 13 years, 18 years ago.
Right. So then... Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those both? That, that amendment passes.
Um, hold on. Next one I have is subparagraph C5. Um, I think what Robbie and I are concerned about is that no one under the age of 18 should be hunting in this managed deer hunt. So, is there any, I, I don't know what language needs to use, except, go ahead.
I had thought that, um, of course, I, I had thought that, that there could be an amendment that says, to that section that just says that there shall, no one be under the age of 18 to be able to hunt, and then retract, um, the valid hunter educate, or I'm sorry, retract the, or who was born before January 1st, 1967, if you, that was something that...
Basically, what we're saying is no one under the age of 18 and all should be MHTC certified.
Correct.
I agree. Second, go over that.
Okay, we already have...
Hold on, Destin.
I have something to add.
Yeah?
If you're over the age of 16, you have to certify those under, so, for the Department of Conservation, if you're under the age of 16, you are allowed to hunt, and you're allowed to get your certification and all those things, but you still have to be within age, adult, under the age of 18, you have to certify. If you are over the age of 16, you have to have that certification in order to come along. So, you don't even need to clarify, over the age of 18, you have to have certification just to be a hunter.
Okay, so just over the age of 18.
So, you don't even need that part, I mean, you were just...
Okay.
So, we're just moving to amend that no person under the age of 18 should be allowed in this managed hunt.
Correct.
Strike everything after the word Cape Girardeau. Strike everything after the word Cape Girardeau. Okay, yeah.
Fair enough.
Okay, a second.
Okay, we've already got that, and we've discussed it. Any further discussion?
We are able to do that within the purview of the established lottery, lottery system under the Missouri Department of...
I will verify it with the Department of Conservation, but I believe so.
Okay.
But I will give verification on that.
All right.
So we can make the amendment and we'll go from there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of this amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That amendment also passes.
Good. The next one is subparagraph E, number four. I would like to remove the words "a city nuisance abatement officer" and replace with the Cape Girardeau Police Department.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Could you say Police Department or Police Officer?
Police Department. Just to keep it consistent with...
It keeps it consistent throughout the resolution. That's...
Yeah, I'm gonna say Police Department. I've changed my mind.
Any other discussion? Again, this is just for continuity in the resolution, and that's okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That amendment also passes.
Guys, I, for the sake of being able to put our feet to the fire and come back and revisit this, I'd like to put an expiration on the term of 12/31/2021.
I was wondering, under Article 31...
Or do you want to just...
During the date of, or, so that's...
I, I just wanted to make sure that at 12/31/2021, that we are forced to come back here and discuss this. That's it.
If it expires, though, you have to go through the whole process of...
No.
Redoing it, do you not?
Yeah, you'd have to, you'd have to...
You'd have to come back and do the first reading again, and the second and third reading again. If we somehow put language in there to say, this is an annual event...
I...
We're doing it now, we're a member.
I think it's important to have this conversation every year. If this is done safely and effectively...
We won't have a problem.
And carefully, and...
And we'll do it each time.
We can either grow, or we cannot grow. This gives us the opportunity to evaluate what has happened and come back next year and address any other concerns we have.
And, I mean, quite frankly, on the other end of that, it's not to say that we look after next year and we think that the program has went fine, and then we don't put a term on it.
Then we have a problem.
But I think for this first year, we, we are gonna have to hold ourselves accountable to the residents, because quite frankly, I don't want to go through what we went through in 2013.
Well, you're still gonna go through it, I think.
Well, well, then, fair enough.
Dustin? Dustin?
I will say, if we do have to do this, I know for two weeks, it's a much simpler this time, because all of these programs are, it will be a much simpler process. So I'm not opposed to it because the hard work's been done.
Yeah, absolutely.
The legwork's been done, and then all we have to do is tweak in our new stats with how successful the hunt was and all those other things. So I'll be real honest, I'm not real opposed to it because the base ordinance is set, all we have to do is present it. So it, it, it should be all right, because this is the hard work to get done.
Yeah.
Because there's so much work to be done.
But then we have to approve any expansions or contractions. We would then have to go through, as part of that renewal process, if we decide to expand it to other areas, we'd have to outline that then, or expand the number of permits or anything like that.
And even if you were to expand it or shrink it, even without an expiration, we would still have to bring this up to the council for a first, second, third, review, because it would actually be a change to the ordinance.
It would be a change to the ordinance.
So...
Okay, I get that. That's good.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
I would suggest, then, if we could change Article 3 to say this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from an after, um, 10 days after its passage and approval, and shall expire on December 31st, 2021.
That's exactly what I said, Eric. No, I'm sorry.
Didn't say that loud.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion also carries. You have now before you the amended ordinance, 21-19. Any further discussion on the amended ordinance?
Mayor, I feel, having lived through the 2013 and seeing the work that Dustin put into this, I mean, quite frankly, myself, I would have supported something that was much more zealous, um, in, in hunting and extracting this, considering I'm one of those that see 13 to 20 deer walking five feet from my front door, uh, or back door.
See my doorbell, and they just move by.
Yeah, I know. And so I, I would have supported something much more zealous than that. With that being said, having read this and seen this, this is, um, much more tame. The areas are, are, are much further away from what some of the concerns were back then, and I really feel like this is a great first step for us to be able to get some information, see how it is managed, and give that opportunity to Dustin and, and, uh, and, and see what, see what, uh, we can accomplish. May, maybe Mayor Fox is right, maybe there'll be a referendum anyway, uh, but I, I feel like this is much different than, than, uh, and I'm, I'm happy about the move forward, so.
Anyway, wanted to throw that out there.
I'm still very tenuous about this. It's still kind of, you know, it's just not something that I'm comfortable with, because I, at the end of the day, there will still be deer. There will still be deer hopping fences and eating roses and everything. We're not fixing the deer problem. It's almost inconsequential whether or not we do this or not, because there will still be deer, uh, lots of deer. And so I, I don't, I, I don't know if this is necessarily, are we actually doing something with this?
All I said was, it's a beginning.
Yeah.
And we'll just have to see what happens.
I don't think that if we woke up in 20 years from now, I don't think this would be the ordinance or the way that we would extract deer from our community, but this is definitely a first step. And if you would talk to the Missouri Conservation Department, I would think that they would probably, I mean, obviously, they support this and, and, and doing that. But I understand your side, Dan, I do.
Okay.
I'd, just to address your point, I mean, and to address some of the points made, yeah, in an ideal scenario, maybe you would have a sharpshooter come in and we pay hundreds of thousands of dollars to have them come in and extract them and extract all the meat and get it processed and get it sent, but this is the most cost-effective and a step in the right direction to then reassess and see if it is an effective means or what needs to be tweaked to make it an effective means to kind of quell the population growth. Because, yes, is it gonna make a difference? Well, yeah, if we get up to 80, that's 80 deer that aren't then procreating and creating other deer.